Today is December 5th, 2023, and we're opening the meeting at 6:45 PM. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please be seated. It's really an honor to have a full house today. And I'd like to first say a few words. I'd like to acknowledge Allen Enterprise for providing dinner for city staff and council prior to tonight's meeting as a gesture of thanks to the works of the city and staff. Allen Enterprise developed the Allen Road Project with nine single-family home-attached homes, including bicycle lanes and pedestrian safety improvements. I would like to express our sincere gratitude for the generous donation of a dinner for our staff and actually, council members can take advantage of that, too. Thank you. Now, I'm gonna move to ceremonial items. The first one is Certificate of Appreciation for Volunteers at the Silicon Valley Korean School.
Mayor Wei? I believe, did we take roll call?
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, roll call. I'm moving fast. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Fruen?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Mayor Wei?
Here. And actually, do we have any closed session reports?
There is no closed session report.
Alrighty, and now we're moving to ceremonial items. And Certificate of Appreciation for Volunteers at the Silicon Valley Korean School. And couldn't I have the students come up fast? We can take a picture. I'm inviting all the council members and Assistant City Manager Amoli. We have certificate for everyone, but this one is to give to your principal. This Certificate of Appreciation for Silicon Valley Korean School for your outstanding commitment to fostering student volunteerism and recognition of your dedication to spreading cultural awareness. The City of Cupertino, thank you for all your hard work and wish you the best luck in all your future endeavors. We have certificate for each and every one of you. Now, let's take a group picture. Where are my fellow council members? I need you to come and take the certificate. Alright, can we see you guys? Can we stand? Okay, I'm gonna try to bend a little bit. I think he's tall enough to take other pictures.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a good idea. Okay?
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Thank you. I know a couple of students would like to make a one-minute appreciation talk.
Hello, I'm Ian Song, the Volunteer President of Silicon Valley Korean School. And first of all, I want to thank you so much for calling us for this award this evening. And as a representative, I want to share a little bit about what I witnessed of this school changing our community. And when I first came to US, I was this Korean-American, and I had trouble finding, like, the midpoint of being Korean and American. But when I heard about the opportunity of volunteering at SVKS, I finally found where I belong. And I'm sure many of us here agrees with me. We all gathered at Korean-Americans to cultivate a community that not only supported each other, but created a greater network in preserving our culture and our language across racial boundaries. And with all the teachers and faculty members working so hard, Korean School became a place where it enriched our Korean-American identity and make it known. I'm so proud to stand here as a representative and receive the honor of community service by the City of Cupertino. Now, I'm gonna pass the mic on to our Vice Volunteer President, Yeon Kim.
Hello, I'm Yeon Kim, Volunteer Vice President. To follow in, I'd like to emphasize the value of what we've achieved together as SVKS volunteers. For the past four school years, we have helped young children learn Korean language and culture. I believe that their positive experiences that we have built will contribute to bettering our society, to diversify it and to enrich it. I believe that we deserve to be very proud of ourselves for our persistence. We worked hard and we made ourselves a fulfilling journey. Today is proof of what you're capable of, doing something good. So, I'd like to credit ourselves for the commitment to bettering our community. Additionally, on top of ourselves, we must also credit our volunteer teacher, Kim Byuk Seong Seung Kim, for making our journey possible. Ultimately, this experience of teamwork and persistence and service will give us the confidence to pursue the good in the future. We did great and build the greater things beyond here, and we will be bettering the community consistently. Thank you.
Thank you. This is our next generation. I want to commend your volunteerism, continue that into your adulthood, and make sure that you are part of the community that you live in. Thank you very much. Our second ceremonial item, actually, we're going from the youth to our most seasoned, most experienced, and most dedicated employee of the City of Cupertino. We'd like to recognize Manny as the City of Cupertino's longest-serving employee. May we have Manny come up to the stage and our fellow council members and our Assistant City Manager, please come up. The City of Cupertino is lucky to have Manny. He not only is dedicated, he has the institutional knowledge. And Cupertino, I hope, is your home. So, I'd like you to speak a few words.
It's a long journey.
It's a long, happy journey, I hope. Alright, let's take a picture with Manny. Thank you so much. How many years?
Fifty years.
Fifty years of service.
Fifty years.
Fifty years, three months, two weeks, and three days. Thank you very much. And now, who is counting? We're not counting. You're gonna stay for a long time. Thank you. I think Manny would like to have Mr. Lee
and Tim Borden to come up.
Coming up.
And Mayor, just, we do have two blue speaker cards for this item, but per council rules, we would move them to Oral Communications.
Yes, that would be good. Thank you. And we would like Manny to stay because there are gonna be some oral communications. Alright, our third ceremony item, not the least, we have our sister cities. Cupertino is enriched by having our sister cities. The sister city of Cupertino, Cupertino, Italy, Toyokawa, Japan, Xinju, Taiwan, and Burmanishwa, India. We are going to come up with, "Thank you, our sister city committees, for enriching Cupertino and making bridges, the connections to our cities in Italy, Japan, Taiwan, and India." Let's go, come and take a picture with them. Last, but not least, there you are. So, let's take a picture first. Put the sister city in the middle. Toyokawa, let's put...
We're still squishing.
Squishing, squishing. Toyokawa, squish out a little bit so we have one of your members here in the front. To get, yeah, in the front. Okay, and I want to be seen, so...
I'll squeeze, no, squeeze in here. We'll all be seen, right? There we go.
Thank you for all the sister cities volunteers, your dedication and your passion really enriched our Cupertino. Thank you so much. Now, I'm gonna bring you back to the council for postponements in order of the day. I do have an announcement. We will need to postpone number 11 to move to January 17, 2024. The notice on this agenda is not properly noticed. So, we are moving item number 11 to January 17, 2024. Now, I'm gonna open up for Oral Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address this council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council, but not on the agenda for discussion, including informational items. We do have a couple of informational items today, so if you'd like to comment on the information items, please do it here at Oral Communications. Madam City Cur, do we have the cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have... So, we have the two speaker cards for Manny, beginning with Sandy James and Roger Lee. Then I have an additional eight speaker cards, and I see two hands raised on screen.
Alright, please proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Welcome, Sandy.
Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council, I'm here tonight, I'm honored to be here tonight, to honor Manny. Manny, as you know, has worked for the city for 50 years. I've lived here most of my life, which is almost 50 years, anyway. I've known Manny as a resident, and I've spoken to many residents who have interacted with him. If you have any things happening in your community, on your street, that you need, Manny is there. He knows every street in the city. I swear, he knows every resident in the city. And the businesses. Michael Lashin asked me to speak for him, who's the former homeowner of Hobie's. And as a businessman, he frequently had opportunity to call Manny, to interact with him, to get his expertise on business matters. Manny is a huge, huge, huge positive for Cupertino. And I think as an employee, a representative of why our city is so great. So, thank you, Manny, for all your years, and congratulations on 50 years.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Roger Lee, you're retired Public Works Director, and I'm very happy to be here. You know, I was fortunate to work with Manny for 13 years. And when I first met Manny, he was a maintenance worker, too. And he was so responsible for, you know, all the storm water inspection. And I think, you know, you're all aware of what all that entails. You know, the city works under a permit with the state. And it's going out and just looking if there's any issues, anything that's gonna affect our waterways. That's what Manny does. And so, you think enforcement, but it's really a job of education. And Manny, when he sees an issue, he takes the time, and he's always done this. And he has such tact and professionalism to explain what's going on, how they need to do it differently. And very rarely would it manifest itself into enforcement. That didn't happen all that much. And without fail, I would get multiple letters of appreciation and thank you about Manny Barrigan and just his way and his delivery and how he took the time to care. And that doesn't happen all that often. So, with that, I really congratulate Manny. The city has been so fortunate to have him working for the city, let alone for 50 years. I mean, when have you ever heard of that before? I never have. And, you know, that's the side that the public sees. But at the service yard, the mentoring that goes on and how that impacts the new maintenance workers that are coming in and how he carries himself. And Manny takes the time to share his experience with others and how to do things right, how to talk with neighbors. Manny, he's doing his job. If he sees a mattress or a chair or something that shouldn't be there, he stops and picks it up. It's just service beyond. I've just never seen it. So, always a privilege to work with Manny. So respectful to myself and others. And I think, you know, the more you can keep him here, which it's all up to him at this point, the better off Cupertino is. So Manny, congratulations. What a pleasure to work for you.
Thank you, Roger. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Emily Poon, followed by John Smith. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm talking about Agenda Item 13. I'm talking about Agenda Item 13, Valco SP Project Update. The original project was approved, submitted and approved in 2018. The site was found to be contaminated. After that, in 2021, cleanup oversight transferred to Santa Clara County DEH, Department of Environmental Health. The modification one, the first one, was submitted and approved, and the DEH cleanup plan was approved in 2022. This year, in July, August of this year, the Valco Property Owner Development Team met with the DEH to discuss possible project changes. After that, DEH notified VPO that the changes were considered significant deviations from the plan and could result in the DEH rescinding their approval of the cleanup plan, could cause delays in the construction schedule, could cause possible deed restrictions, long-term monitoring and inspections if contamination remained on-site. Yesterday, last night, the application for a second modification was submitted by Valco Property Owner. So now, the City of Cupertino and DEH will review this application. Questions many residents would like to know are how many times can an approved SP 35 project be modified before it's no longer valid? Each modification takes the project further and further away from its original proposal. Two, when are modifications considered significant enough deviations to be considered a completely new project? Three, the source of the PCE contamination at Valco is assumed to have come from another property, but it hasn't been identified. If the flow from off-site isn't stopped, how can the cleanup be completed? And question four, if the source of the PCE isn't identified, it could impact public health now and in the future. What can be done to locate the source to protect the people of Cupertino? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Emily Poon, followed by John Smith, followed by Charlene Lee. Welcome, Emily.
Good evening. My name is Emily, and I have been a resident here for the last 16 years. The topic today is pigeon-proof solar panels with bird mesh. I'm concerned when I see a lot of solar panels on the new buildings at the former Oaks Center. Please look at the picture. Pigeons love to nest under solar panels, especially panels on Spanish tile roofs. They like the warmth and shelter. They cause a lot of damage once they have nested as the nests grow quickly in size, often unnoticed. When humans are aware of the problem, it is costly to remove, clean out the pigeon nests, and exclude the pigeons. Prevention is better than cure. Search on the internet and the information of bird mesh to stop pigeons is easily found. I like the metal better as it's more durable. The one I'm familiar with actually is like this metal, but it has black UV coating. And then, the job that we had done on our condo actually was a custom job when the vendor cut the bottom of the mesh in the undulating lines to fit the Spanish tile. So, my experience is from being the point person when I was at my condo as I interviewed all the vendors. There were a lot of difficulties in this job. One, there were few qualified vendors. Prices were all high. Two, cleaning, what was to be cleaned was feathers and poop. One company suggested cleaning with water using a hose. Another company would scrape and sweep and vacuum, warning us the pigeon poop would expand on contact with water and clock up the storm stewards. Three, each company offered a different material and different clips to close up the opening. Four, a boom was needed for that height. Boom rental prices were extremely high. From this photo, I cannot see if there is already bird mesh in place. I hope somebody contacts the builder to tell them of my concern. Or maybe there is no gap and there is no danger of pigeons going under. Thank you. We don't want to wait until the owner are the future homeowners because they would not have the wherewithal to deal with us, a problem of this difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we have John Smith, followed by Charlene Lee, followed by Long Zhao. Welcome, John.
Okay. This is from the attachments investigation on 11/18...
Can you speak louder?
Yeah, on 11/18/2020, at approximately 15:22 hours, I was dispatched to 22530 Alcade Road in the City of Cupertino to investigate a protective order violation. I arrived and contacted victim O1, who informed me she was
Can you speak louder?
the protected person of a served no-contact protective order. Also provided me with copies of the restraining orders and an Excel spreadsheet that included all the emails that were sent by the restraining person. Suspect O1, Charlene Lee, provided me with the following statement. "Charlene from Turrits." Charlene began to make negative accusations toward her son, victim O2, towards the end of 2017. A protective order was issued by the Superior Court of Santa Clara County on their behalf. The protective order included VO1, VO2, VO3, VO1. The protective order was granted on 12/28/2020, with an expiration date of 12/28/2020. The order indicated the defendant Charlene was personally served with a copy of the order at the court hearing. This restraining order was fabricated after Joe Biden became president. The protective order indicated Charlene must have no personal electronic, telephonic, or written contact with the protected persons. Created an Excel spreadsheet at the time Charlene sent emails to the number of recipients and the number of times she was mentioned. Approximately 21 emails were sent from Charlene to Turrits on 2/05/2020. Finally decided to seek prosecution for the multiple violations of the protective order because she needed to protect her son. Charlene was tarnishing VO2 name and email in his school. Charlene sent emails to the link and mentioning VO1 did not want to escalate things with Charlene, but was suffering emotional stress. And Charlene had recently sued the family for approximately $9 million. Show me a political law sign that Charlene made during her campaign for the Cupertino City Council. The law sign was printed with, "Will Charlene Lee," with words like, "That I issued a death threat." The bottom sign it included. I saw Excel spreadsheet and screenshot of emails sent to VO1. Google, I saw there were numerous emails. I attempted to read Charlene the Miranda advisement from my department issued Miranda card. I read the first of four advertisements that Charlene kept yelling. She wanted to see the original copy of the protective order. A short time later, I again attempted to read Charlene the Miranda advisement. Charlene kept yelling. I was unable to ask SO1 Charlene any questions to violate protective orders since she did not know it's the Miranda advisement. Based on Charlene's statements, my observations, and her escalating history of calls, I believe Charlene was a danger. As a result, mental illness, I attempted to read Charlene the detainment advisement, placed her on a 72-hour hold for psychological... Oh, time.
That is your time. Thank you. Next, we have Charlene Lee, followed by Long Zhao, followed by Danesa Tchmansky. Welcome, Charlene.
Hi, my name is Charlene Lee. I work for Cupertino City Council 2020. But after the end of election, I've been put into jail. I've been released on September 22, 20... September 1st, 2022. Please technically withdraw order. No call name, no call address, no defendant name, no civil case name. This is a fair withdrawal order. And they say I violate this withdrawal order February 5, 2019, when Trump is president. But I work for Cupertino City Council 2020. Nobody arrests me.
Ms. Lee, would you like to speak into the microphone so people online can hear?
Nobody arrests me. But then, Joe Biden win, they force file this withdrawal order and put me in jail. I've been released on September 1st, 2022. So, in New York, if you Google say New York, if police lie in police report of February or February evidence, the police need to go to jail. But in California, send a picture, Google, keep a high list thing, and we can talk about this. So, I... So I remind all residents of Cupertino, because I work for Cupertino City Council. I am five feet two inches, but police officer Jeffrey Ria say I'm five feet five inches. They say I'm one seventy pounds, but my driver's license is one twelve pounds. And I am one oh seven two, one twelve pounds. But, and they also fabricated my birthday. They say I have two birthdays. On November fifteenth, two zero twenty, they, 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 my second son's buried, and they write a return order, thirty-day emergency return order, say I'm one seventy pounds. Do you agree I'm one seventy pounds? The, the thirty-day return order say my birthday, June first, nineteen seventy-two. But I was born August tenth, nineteen sixty-three. I have year master's degree, my husband have year PhD degree in computer science. So what's the reason to put, same time with your wife, or Cupertino City Council, candidate two zero twenty into jail for a couple of years? So these cars, however, need to go. I hope billion people can watch this video, or, they say my.
That is your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next we have Long Zhao, followed by Dinesh Tekmansky, followed by Jane.
Well, always.
That is your time.
Don't suicide, die, it's such wrong.
Can we switch to other? Can I switch to other with Vanessa?
Dinesh?
Yeah, I was supposed to go first.
Yeah, I put the card underneath.
Mayor, is that, yeah. Okay. Dinesh Tekmansky, followed by Long Zhao, followed by Jane. Welcome, Dinesh.
Thanks so much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Dinesh Tekmansky, and I've lived in Cupertino for about thirty-three years. Tonight, I'm representing a small group of Cupertino residents who care passionately about our community and the welfare of our city. We feel that the best way that a city council can act on behalf of its residents is through direct democratic representation. As a way to achieve this, we have worked to develop a polling system called the Cupertino Voice. Our polls will ask questions about important city issues and decisions in an unbiased and neutral as, as a manner as possible. There are no right or wrong answers, and our job is only to convey how our residents have voted. We hope to issue about ten polls a year, maybe. Why we're doing the Cupertino Voice. Having access to general public sentiment and opinion can be difficult, as only a small sample of our residents actually attend city council meetings. For many, it's not convenient, and for others, it may not be comfortable to speak publicly. Our mission is to use the Cupertino Voice polling system to find out exactly what truly matters to Cupertino's residents and give them a voice. I know it's not always possible to please the, the public, but at least this gives you guys a better shot at it. A second advantage to our public polling system is that it helps to raise awareness and foster community discussion about important civic issues. Our survey is open to everyone. Participants are classified as verified Cupertino voters or as the general public. We publish both total results as well as individual votes anonymously, so that the participants can go back and verify that their votes have been recorded properly. We do not see the names of voters unless they went to, wish to contact us with questions or comments, and we only consider those voters who are registered with a valid email address as verified Cupertino voter, so we can validate them with two-factor identi, two-factor authentication. I hope that we can contribute a valuable and informational service to both our council and our residents. My friend Long will be speaking after me on the results of our two first polls. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dinesh. Next we have Long Zhao, followed by Jane, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Long.
Good evening, council members. My name is Long Zhao, Cupertino resident. I would like to share our survey results. I reprinting Cupertino Voice, and two hundred thirty-four residents who participated in the survey. It includes two hundred and twelve registered Cupertino voters. We performed two surveys in October twenty, twenty-third and November this year, respectively. And the first survey was a pilot to test our methods and technology. The second survey was how should Cupertino balance its budget deficit? We had some technical difficulties for the first survey, which received one hundred twenty-three total responses, with eighty-one from verified voters. The second survey received two hundred thirty-four total responses, with two hundred twelve from verified voters. We would like to share some results from survey number two, since there are two options that received more than fifty-five percent votes from registered voters. The question was, what service do you think Cupertino can eliminate to further save money? It's about the budget. The option one is that scaling back the staff per one thousand residents to fifty, to fiscal year, twenty fourteen to fifteen level, would save the city nine million dollar each year. It received one hundred fifty-one votes in total, with one hundred thirty-six votes from registered Cupertino voters. Option two, freeze city staff and employee salaries until the budget is balanced or in a surplus. It received one hundred thirty-one votes in total, with one hundred twenty votes from registered Cupertino voters. Could you turn the projector, please? So as you can see, the staff per one thousand residents kept increasing in the last ten years. We should go back, since our city cannot afford it anymore. So the residents took time to take the survey and provide the response. It's up to the city council to listen to the residents.
Thank you. That is your time. And next we have Jane, followed by Rhoda Frye. Jane? Welcome.
Sorry. Okay. Let me see. No, we don't. All right. All right. Council members, guests, and then we accept that actually, the justice is not for everybody. Actually, for months it's already, it's for the matters. I think people, some people know. It's about this little playhouse, and we had this bearing wall, actually, inside, but we have a little millimeter particle board here, because it's particle board. And we, they say, within hours, when we had somebody, third party tried to explain, they got a five-figure fine on it. And then, and then they also take, take the property belonging away again, again, without notice, and hand it to different court. But all this, it's, it's, it's separate right now, because we actually asking you, can you please lift the ban on suing from us anything other related to this matter? Because this ban, we can't define ourselves for any harassment, attacks, or any other nasty stuff. And this is the household, I have a single mom, and trying to take care of the family and elders, and I don't get much help from society or anyone. And this ban is just making things way harder. It feels pretty unfair, and we really appreciate it if you could reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. And our final speaker in community hall is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi. Good evening again. I wanted to echo a comment made by Ms. Griffin early this evening about making sure that all businesses have business licenses, they're taxed. But you know what? I think everybody needs to pay their fair share, and it seems like that would be an opportunity to go after low-hanging fruit. I do have a little slide up here, and also, I thought that the speakers about the surveys were quite compelling. So I, anyway, look forward to seeing more of their surveys. So anyway, this isn't, this is part of the budget. There it is. Strategic goals for the budget. Up top, and I'm going to talk about a grab bag of things tonight, public engagement and transparency. So that is a strategic goal. It's up top. We need to be doing it. However, when this council started this year, there was an, an effort to attempt to have less public participation, and there has been less and less transparency. Among, among them is, we're no longer televising the parks and rick meetings. They, there is an audio recording of them for the minutes, and I would ask that they be retained. I've been asking for that for a long time, and it hasn't happened, and it makes me really sad. The next thing is about jobs and the budget. I hope you can read this. But anyway, this is what was going on in the budget in two thousand and nineteen. This is what's going on in the budget now. Looking at increasing employee headcount by, do, 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 eleven percent. So I kind of was wondering where that was coming from, and I went onto OpenGov. It's a really cool app. And sure enough, I found that there's twenty-three jobs there that just have description pending. And these are all new jobs that never existed before. It's about two hundred and twenty-five jobs, budgeted up from a couple hundred. Really confused about that. Would love to get an answer about that. I've asked, haven't heard back yet. So the other concern I had, and this is related to, actually, the contractor that talked earlier, Urban Futures. We had, this is kind of confusing, we have these things that look like muni bonds, except for they're called certificates of participation. We had financed them with forty-three million. We were down to twenty-seven. So it was like, hey, let's refi, for whatever reason. Our interest rates were about three percent. So there they are. That's what we had. And so the idea was, let's go ahead and refi. We've got a good faith estimate, said the city council. Don't worry, be happy. We're going to save interest rate, the interest rate is going down. We weren't given an estimate, though, for the savings if we completely paid off, paid it off. It was going to go to be twenty-two million. So this is what we've got. We've got twenty-two million. Here's the, here's what happened. Twenty-two million, this is what we got in the report. They didn't provide a interest rate. We were told it would be lower, but guess what? It wound up being four percent. Why? I want to know why. Thanks.
Thank you, Rhoda. And we have four hands raised on Zoom. San R, Lisa Warren, Babu Srinivasan, and Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, San.
Evening, mayor, and council members. I would like to bring to your attention that there was a dog attack recently at Joloman Park. As you know, I have brought your attention multiple times that the dogs off-leash is a threat and a safety risk to residents, as well as other dog owners and dogs. And unfortunately, this has come to pass, and Joloman Park witnessed a sad incident recently. In case you're unaware of it, it is fairly vital on next door. I request you to please take urgent action to undo the actions of the prior council that passed dollar trials and dollars at a number of parks. I recognize that this is not a doing of the current council. I request you to please take urgent action to prevent further risk. We have a number of communities where dogs are illegally let loose. The vast majority of dogs and dog owners are very well behaved. Sadly, even a single excited or untrained dog, or a badly behaved dog owner, can pose a risk to everyone else, and that is a, that is a sad state. So I request you to please take action on this. Secondly, I'm extremely disappointed that on two days before Thanksgiving, city council chose to defund the July Fourth evening celebrations. It was a poor choice of timing, when residents were away planning for Thanksgiving, that this item came up, and further that it was, it was added in on other unrelated agenda items. I request you to please find the budget to fund July Fourth evening celebrations. This is not something where, you know, we, we, we should be taking it as, as a cost-cutting item. July Fourth is, is paramount on our priorities, and I hope you will find the ways to fund that. There are a number of places where you can cut. There are allocations for Stevens Creek Vision Studies, there are allocations for urban villages, there are allocations for office reorganization, one million for business continuity resilience. We can go on and on, on the projects. Even the consultant study projects are a hundred and seventy thousand. July Fourth should not be sacrificed for, for the sake of cost-cutting. I request you to please find the budget, and I also request you to please not vote on the eve of holidays when the public is likely represented. I think today we saw another incident where you have input without sufficient input from the public. So I request you to please take public input into account, and I hope Saint Judgment will bring back July Fourth evening celebrations, and I hope all five council members will support that. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And our final three speakers are Lisa Warren, Babu Srinivasan, and Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Lisa.
So first, Manny. I have had the pleasure of dealing with Manny a few times over the years, several times over the years, for various things, and just running into him at Civic Center, and he recognized me, and we talked, and just about nothing city-related. My point is, I haven't spoken to him or seen him in a few years. My point that I want to make is that he always had a smile on his face. He was always a real, genuine person, and he paid attention to what residents had to ask and what residents were concerned about. That's my experience with him over the years, and he felt more like a neighbor than a city employee, which doesn't mean he's the only one that feels that way, or appears that way to people, but he, he's something special, and I'm glad he was recognized tonight. And item number thirteen on tonight's agenda, the, the note, well, what are we calling it? Informational item where we're learning of the new proposal, new changes to the current rise via letter from Reed Molds. And I, it's been confirmed that the, the new proposal came in last night before five o'clock, as, as stated in the letter. I haven't seen it yet, and I did confirm that it will be posted, including all schematics will be posted on the website, but I'd like to find out when that will happen, assuming it hasn't happened today, and where it would be located, so that people can look at it. And I want to echo everything that Peggy Griffin said in her speaking, and anything she missed from her written communications that was on the same subject. And I would also like to add about the contaminations, the contaminants on the property not being identified, really, and thought to be off-site. I am clearly, if someone asked me if I believed that these contaminants were coming from off-site sources, I would say yes, and that they're likely coming from sites that are going to be considered, or have already been considered, for housing element sites. So I would encourage the city to do something about looking into what they actually are for the reasons that Peggy mentioned, but also, why not get ahead of the game on properties that you're expecting housing to be built on? So if that's.
Thank you, Lisa. That is your time. Next we have Babu Srinivasan and Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Babu.
Thanks. I also want to touch upon that July Fourth celebrations. It's important that the city engages in those type of activities. Maybe, I'm not sure how much is funding, but even on a reduced scale, because that is one of the activity that brings the community together. And I have a quick question. I, I don't know who, who can answer it. Is it possible, or is it fair to understand, if Costco does the business out of Cupertino, the city gets revenue out of what they sell? Or it doesn't matter where they are selling? Or it doesn't matter where they are selling? As far as we use our card, we get billed, and you get the city council gets revenue. How does that work?
Okay, thank you, Babu. Next, our final speaker that had their hand raised in, before the cutoff, is Venkatesh Ranganathan. Welcome, Venkatesh.
Hi, good evening, city council. This is Venkatesh Ranganathan. I wanted to represent a couple of items today. One was the traffic from Steven, from Portal to Stevens Creek on both directions, particularly when you take left on Stevens Creek to go towards Wool, which is what people from the Valco area, you know, Amherst Blaney area to, to drop their kids at Cupertino high in the morning. The, and the opposite direction, the left-only lane is lined up with the road coming in, and many people missed, who are new to the area mistakenly take it as a straight lane. And I have seen that more than once in my own eyes. In the last couple of weeks, people had to break because the person who is supposed to be taking left lane, left, from the left-only lane goes straight, thinking they are going straight and they were in the right lane. That's one thing I wanted to bring up. So maybe some additional item, additional, you know, indicators saying that, hey, this is a left-only lane, you know, the better painting on the road as well as on the signal post itself. The second one is on the July Fourth celebration. I have seen lots of people during the last July Fourth inquiring about where, how can we watch it? A lot of people with young, young kids, they wanted to watch. So there is a generally an interest in July Fourth to, particularly the fireworks aspect of it. It could be good if some, somewhere the money is found to, you know, keep that particular tradition going. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Venkatesh. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank all the speakers for speaking tonight. Now I am going to close the public, the oral communications and move to.
Can I request the staff to respond to those questions? And then please CC the council with the answers.
We can certainly work with, with the residents on their questions, absolutely.
Yeah, I think, yeah, quite a few of them have had questions.
Yeah, and some of those questions have been answered. There was one where we were, there was a conversation about positions and positions that were added. And that, that particular resident had received an email from staff on that. So some, some of the answers are responded to fairly quickly.
Yes, I've seen that, I've seen that response too. Thank you. Okay, I'm sure our staff will get back to the residents on the rest of the questions. Okay, I am going to bring it back to council for consent calendar number four to nine. Do we have any consent calendar being pulled?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Moore pulled item six, Recology, and item eight, SVCE Grant.
Okay, we have six and eight. Do we have any council member want to pull?
I want to pull the item for canceling December nineteenth meeting.
And that is item number?
Item.
Number nine?
Nine.
Okay. Thank you. So we have consent calendar number six, eight, and nine being pulled. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar, which is four, five.
Mayor, point of order. Would you like to take a public comment on the?
I'd like to open up public comments for items four, that's what I meant to say. Items four, five, and seven. If you have public comments for item number six, eight, or nine, it will be, you have the opportunity to make public comments when we open up for individual discussions. So the public comments right now is for number four, five, and seven. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, since we don't have any public comment, I'm going to.
No hands raised on Zoom either.
I'm going to close the public comment for consent calendar number four, five, and seven, and entertain a motion. May I have a motion, please?
I, I so move. We adopt the consent calendar, items four, five, and seven.
Moved by some Mayor Mohan. May I have a second? Councilmember Moore?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Let's vote by light.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now we have number six, eight, and nine. Considering the timing, I'd like to make a motion to move number six, eight, and nine before our action, before the public hearing. May I have a second, please?
Seconded.
Okay, it's being moved and seconded.
Mayor.
Discussion?
So I put the, the cancellation of the meeting because.
That's okay, we'll talk about it.
Can we consider that after we consider all the other items? In case we might postpone items that we need December nineteenth meeting? So I think we should consider that at the end.
Okay, so you want to make a friendly amendment?
Yes, friendly amendment to consider item nine at the end of the meeting.
After the public hearing?
After.
Public hearing, right?
Public hearing.
Not in it, because, you know, before the.
After all the action, and action item, oh, action item was already moved. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment. I will accept a friendly amendment. And my second, or would you, wait a minute. Yes, my second, would you accept it or not?
Yes, I accept.
Okay, so we have a motion with a friendly amendment, and let's vote by light if you know further discussions.
The motion carries with Mohan voting no.
Okay, so we are moving to immediately to item number six, which is adopt a maximum rate schedule for rate period four for Recology to provide recycling, organics, and solid waste collection, recycling of organics processing services, and transport for disposal as calculated using the allowed and approved methodology in the franchise agreement. Do we have a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Ursula Zerova has the staff report for us, and we also have some consultants available to help her with the conversation should we need them.
Thank you.
Brief introduction, Ursula, on the item and the recommendation, we create.
Sure. Hi, good evening, Mayor Way, council. This is about Recology's rate year four, which is calculated per methodology in the agreement, which was adopted in December 2020. And so the rate adjustments reflect going through that methodology. And then the way we approved, the way council approved in 2020, we also proposed to continue smoothing the rates down so that they're not jumping in one year. And so we just proposed continuing that, and those are the recommended actions for tonight.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open up for council questions. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, and thank you for the report and the, the pre-meeting on this item. I was wondering, when I look at the table that you have for, for Cupertino's rate increase, how much, we're expecting the two dollars and one cent extra per month, but how much is the, the, I guess, rate smoothing amount that would, that's, that's really included with this because we're being subsidized? How much is, is that actually per resident?
So the question would be, if it weren't being smoothed, what would the increase be? In terms of dollars per month? I don't know that I have that exact calculation, but the percent increase would have been twelve point one-six percent without the smoothing, so we smoothed it down to five. Folks at home can do the math.
It's a little over four, four dollars. Okay, okay, I get that. And then thank you for putting together the very comprehensive comparison listing of what all the other cities have for, for their sorting. Looks like Sunnyvale has probably the most extensive, if I'm following the chart correctly. They're, okay, so they have to go and do this, the five category pre-sort, and then they also have that post-processing, that post-collection processing. So that's when you go look at, you can look at the smart station online. You can watch the video if you haven't been there. And then you can see all the extra stuff that happens to make sure it's, this is diverted out of the landfill. Okay, so I have a question about, just to clarify. We have talked about the diversion cost because everything we put in our gray bin goes to Newby Island. Okay, and, and about what percentage, like with food waste, are we, are we still putting in that gray bin that could be diverted later? And then the next question is, the state's going to want us to be diverting a lot. Are we meeting our diversion amounts right now? And are we going to need to do something in the future to improve?
Sure, so, let's see. So the first question was, how much green waste? Yes, so our waste characterization that we did in 2018, 2019 showed about half by weight for all sectors, residents, multifamily, commercial. Half by weight was organic compostables that could have been pulled out and put in the green bins. And then the second question.
Well, sorry. Through the mayor, so what will the state, what will the state be requiring us to do? Because if we're only doing fifty percent, what are they going to want?
So thirteen eighty-three is the regulations that are placing these requirements on all, all of California. And they have goals, long-term goals at the state level, but the regulations themselves are just very prescriptive. You shall have three bins. You shall try to make people sort into the bins. You're going to audit the bins, starting in 2024. You're going to audit the bins and start issuing corrective actions if people aren't sorting correctly. So it's very prescriptive, and the, the overall goal is statewide. So it's not saying you, Cupertino, need to reach X amount. It's statewide, and we are doing the prescribed actions in the regulations.
Thank you. So we're meeting it now. Okay, so the, the estimates that we were given were five to eight dollars to have the post-sorting, should we elect to do that in the future? So I just want people to understand the, the unsubsidized amount is, it would be four dollars plus another potentially five to eight. With the subsidy, we're getting a two dollars discount. Okay, so the next question is regarding the, the franchise fee. There was, there was a Supreme Court case, California Supreme Court case, where a, a city had, was collecting a franchise fee, but hadn't specified where that money was going. And I was wondering what our, what we, what we are specifying for our franchise fee? What is, what is that specifically for? Thank you.
So, yeah, so, so, you know, obviously, the city attorney's office is aware of, of, of the, the Zolly case, and we are actively advising our, our staff on how to, to, to manage our franchise agreement to make sure we comply with the state law, the California Constitution.
Okay, thank you. And I have like four seconds, so I wanted to make sure that we have that specified. I'm a little, little worried about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do we have any more questions? If not, I'm going to open up a public comment. Okay, let's open up a public comment. Do we have any cards here?
Yes, Mayor, I have three cards in Community Hall from Brooke Ezit, Rhoda Frye, and Peggy Griffin. And I see two hands raised on Zoom. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you. I'm not able to get down into the weeds because I haven't had enough time to, but I can say that I'm not wildly enthusiastic about the garbage rate increase because of my experiences with Recology. Over the last couple of weeks, I've tried to get in touch with them through various phone numbers to ask questions, and I have gotten a busy circuit signal. And I know that another person in my neighborhood has had the same effect, has had the same experience. So I would hope that the city going forward would tie performance to the rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Beduard. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening again. My ideas are better spelled out in your packets than I can do probably in person. You know, I was looking at the agenda packet, and I see that the net amount of money that's coming from Recology to Cupertino has gone up one million dollars between, from February twenty-one to now. That's a lot of money, and I'm wondering why is so much more money coming into the city from, from Recology? And to me, it kind of looks like a tax, which is what I, why I wrote in about the Supreme Court case. And I'd also like to know why wasn't this case that happened in 2022 being discussed at this meeting? Why are we going to find out about it later? I don't know. So of this whole kitty of money that comes in, two point one million just goes to the general fund. It looks like it disappears. It doesn't look like it's allocated toward anything. I'd like to understand that. And the other thing that's happened is, is that this balance for this other fund where it's going is growing and growing and growing. So you've got this fund that you're allocating money to, and if it continues to grow and it's not doing anything, then, you know, it kind of sort of looks like a tax. So why are we taxing our people? So this is a, in the, should be in the minutes. So kind of goes over what I've talked about, the franchise, the franchise fee tax. So again, I, I, actually, maybe, maybe city attorney had looked at my comments earlier, and I have links on there, but now we're going to get into the rates overall. And it appears that Ms. Moore has already addressed some of the issues that I'm going to be talking about today, so I'll just emphasize what she said. And that is that we've got Mountain Views rate and Sunnyvale's rate are kind of actually less than? Are they less than? Yep, they're less than, or kind of comparable to Cupertino, what Cupertino is going to be. However, they are selling a better product. They're doing more for their residents with that money. And if we were going to add, this is the other thing, right? Cupertino Greens, if you look at your packets, you'll see this. If we were, this is even conservative, because we'd go up like five to eight dollars a can if we were going to do that, then we'd be way higher than these other ones. So when we're hearing in these agendas that it's okay, don't worry, our garbage rates are about the same as our communities, it just doesn't look like it to me. And so I'd just like to have some more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Beduard, followed by Glenn Fischler. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, city council and staff. I want to thank Ursula for answering my questions. It explained some of the stuff. The, in the contract, Recology, if I remember correctly, several years ago when the contract was, signed it before, it did not go out to bid. Surveys were taken, people decided they're doing a wonderful job. It didn't go out to bid. And if you look at the contract, it says the profit is twenty-seven point five percent. Ursula pointed out to me that out of that twenty-seven point five percent, the franchise fee is taken out. And what results is a seventeen percent profit. Now, she said it's not guaranteed, but if they keep their caps to five percent, they're basically guaranteed seventeen percent profit. I don't know of any company that's guaranteed a profit like that. And Rhoda did some research, and I think it was Gilroy or Morgan Hill that uses Recology. Their profit is nine percent. So why is there such a big difference, almost double? People on fixed income, like myself, social security, are severely impacted by incremental increases over and over and over of taxes. A dollar here, fifty cents there. It adds up. And eventually, the last one is the straw that makes somebody homeless. So when you think of just, it's just another dollar, it could be the last dollar. Social Security COLA was 3.7%. It starts in January. Your increase is 5%. Now, if you keep doing that, we're going under. We're not even going to be level year after year. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next we have Jean Beduard, followed by Glenn Fischler. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, City Council and staff members. I didn't plan on speaking. In fact, I'm irritated because this was pulled off of the consent calendar. So that means an additional 40 minutes to an hour extension of the, of the council meeting tonight. That's what happens when you pull a consent item. This contract was thoroughly dissected forwards, backwards, sideways, and whatever, earlier this year. Over the years, you know, it's been considered very extensively. This was an initiative to reduce the amount of waste that goes into our landfill by as much as a third to half because organics are being placed in trash. This is in support of the city's climate action plan. So why are we wasting all of this time digging into irrelevant details? I mean, we're talking about a whole $2.01 per month for the residents. And it's been mitigated by using special city funds. You know, utilities go up every year. I mean, there's cost of wages, there's the cost of the landfill, there's everything that goes into it. So I urge you, put a stop to this. Stop wasting public time, council time, and staff time on irrelevant questions that are answered in the material provided publicly. I read through it extensively. There is no need to spend this much time on such a tiny item. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next we have Glenn Fischler. Welcome, Glenn.
Good evening again. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. When I saw this on the agenda, I assumed it would be a no-brainer and didn't plan to speak on it. Pretty much the same comments that the previous speaker had is, why are we talking about something that's already been discussed in detail before? It looked to me like it was just going to be gone through. I have lived in other places and seen other ways of dealing with landfills. We do a good job generally here in this state and specifically with this type of contract. So I'm in support of a relatively minor increase to be able to continue to improve the way that we're managing our waste. I don't know why we're talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. And now we will move to Zoom. We have two hands raised, Sam R. and Anna Sei. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, City Council. The reason that I would like to offer comment on this, firstly, I am opposed to any price increases that the council brings about on residents, whether it be taxes or utility rates. Secondly, the $2 is going to be followed in short order by another hike, likely to the extent of $8 per month because of processing fees. But I'm opposed to it on the principle that you're not empathizing with the hard times that people are going through. To the two prior speakers that offered public comment, if you lived in Cupertino for decades, your property tax may be a fraction of the property tax that residents pay if they moved in the last decade. I know that Councilmember J.R. Shroom is in favor of housing and is in favor of Cupertino for all. I ask you, what is the cost of a home if you move to Cupertino today? What is the mortgage rates if you move to Cupertino today? We are in the last week before property taxes are delinquent. For many Cupertino residents this week, those that have moved here in the last 10 years, your tax bill is $15,000, $20,000 or more. The cost of a new home in Cupertino is $1.5 million. Do the math. That's going to be a property tax bill of $20,000. I asked the prior two speakers, what is their property tax bill? When people don't empathize with the pains that the community faces on the cost of housing, on the cost of mortgages, on the cost of rent, you're unable to relate to the pains of the community. And it is not the cost, but it is the principle and it is the lack of empathy with what people are feeling. I draw to your attention the hard times the community is going through. Cupertino is a community of tech employees. We are a tech-heavy community. And I draw to your attention that just in the last year, in 2023 alone, there were over 400,000 tech layoffs. These are not just numbers. These are residents, many of whom are right around us. In 2022, there were over 240,000 tech layoffs. Just in the last month alone, 25% of Nextdoor was laid off. 2,000 employees at VMware, right down the road on Footile Expressway, were laid off. And I ask you, talk to people who are in the tech industry. Ask them how hard it is to get a job. I know Councilmember J.R. stands for the youth. He empathizes with the youth. Look at how hard it is to get a job if you're an intern. Look at how hard it is to get a job if you're an NCG. Over the last two years, NCGs have had their offers revoked. Please show empathy for the hard times residents face. We need you to not pass on taxes and hikes to residents. Please use your funds to offset hikes on the principle of.
Thank you, Sam. That was your time. And I actually missed a card from Community Hall from Louise Sedadi, so I'm going to call on you now. Welcome, Louise.
Hello. Thank you for recognizing me. I'm Louise Sedadi and I'm speaking in support of Item 6. And the previous speaker was going on and on about how horrible things are. And I can add to that and talk about the horrible attack in Iran, in Israel, Hamas, Gaza. I mean, things are really horrible in the world right now. The Ukraine, Russian fight, you know. So there, you can, you can just throw all the things that are wrong in the world in here. But we're here in Item 6 about a simple $2 addition to our ecology bill. So let's be real, okay? We have big problems and this small $2 fee is about a small effort by the city to address a big problem, climate change. All right, we have a Climate Action Plan 2.0. So yes, the previous speaker went on and on about all the stresses that we have. Well, one of the stresses is climate change. So this $2 fee will really make a difference. It's a tiny rate increase whereby we would have better service from Recology to help implement Climate Action Plan 2.0 on solid waste disposal. Methane is the second most abundant greenhouse gas. It has 25 times the global warming potential of CO2 and persists in the atmosphere for 10 to 12 years. Rotting food in landfills is a source of methane that we can reduce by turning it into compost instead. That's why I support renewal of the Recology contract for the very small fee increase. The contract was approved in May of 2023 unanimously by the council. I really agree with the previous speakers that were saying, why are we talking about this $2 fee increase to be part of the Climate Action Plan, to be compliant with it over and over again? We can talk about it over and over again and again and again and about everything else. The contract was approved May 2023 unanimously by the council. Rate increases of two per month to sort organics out of trash, reducing waste sent landfill by one-third to one-half. It will reduce it. This agreement should just be a formality. Please don't waste time and attach all the problems that we're facing in Cupertino, the state.
Thank you, Louise. That is your time. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to thank all the speakers and close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Do we prefer to have a motion first and second, and just open for discussion? Or you want to open discussion first? I don't.
Through the mayor, I, I need some clarification on some comments.
Sure, well, you will have time to, do you, okay, shall we just open for discussions now? Okay, Councilmember Moore, you go first.
Okay, so we were, in the supplemental materials, we were given a table because I had asked for us to be able to tell what our neighboring cities were getting for the fees that they were paying. So if I'm reading this correctly, so for Cupertino, we have the, the, what looks like the least, the three-category pre-sort, where anything we place in a garbage container goes directly to the landfill. Is this agreement changing that so we're having this waste diversion and extra service for only $2? Because I am all for that.
I wish that were the case, but yeah, to clear up any misunderstanding, this rate adjustment is just a maintenance of current services that are adjusting after a cost-based adjustment that looked at reality of year two and inflationary indices. This is not a change in services and the agreement was actually approved in 2020. We're looking in our, our fourth year. The agreement laid out the first three years of rates and then had methodologies for how the rest of the years were going to adjust. And that was all approved in 2020. So this is just the exercise of going through that methodology. The part where we, in May, what we talked about was extra sorting and how we're pursuing those services that, and then we'll bring that back to council before anything gets decided. And that's where that five to eight extra dollars might come in. And that's where we start, we could potentially be sorting the garbage at that point and removing compostables and recyclables. But today, this $2 is just maintenance of the current services and reflecting inflation.
Thank you, and I'll keep going. There was a comment about having an issue with the phone system working for Recology. And I've heard that comment from another member of the public who could not get a call to. I want to point your attention to PDF page 313 of the package, Exhibit 8F. Performance standards: failure to answer phones, respond to emails, any failure by the contractor during normal business hours to answer a customer telephone call within four rings or to respond to a customer email. A call is not considered to be answered if the customer does not speak with a live operator. A call is considered to be answered if the customer hangs up or abandons the call following a hold time of less than three minutes. Acceptable performance level: less than 1 per 1,000 calls received under this agreement. Liquidated damage amount: $50 per event. There are a number of performance standards and within Exhibit F. So I would like staff to perhaps reach out to see if those performance standards are, are indeed being met. I'm hearing this concept that it's only $2. It's really over $4 to, because the, the city is subsidizing the residential ratepayers. And then if we go to, to meet, say, the, the performance standards which Sunnyvale has for 44.64, that is a five-category pre-sort for $44.64. Garbage, food scraps, yard waste, recyclable containers, paper. And then they have post-collection processing of garbage. And recyclable and compostable materials is sorted out of the garbage before the remaining amount is sent to the landfill. That is the, the highest level of sorting that we have. If we move to that and we do a calculation of a $5 to $8 increase to get that service to us, that brings us up to $49 to $52 if you don't, if you don't consider the $2 subsidy. With the subs, so without the subsidy being included, our real jump would be 22.5% to 30% increase in our rates. With the subsidy, the $2, that brings us down to a 17.5% to a 25% rate increase to have those services. So I want to make sure people understand how much that would actually be costing us. I'll leave it at that.
If I can, just to speak briefly, Recology has had a specific technological issue lately that they've been dealing with. I know we have a lot of Recology folks here, but they're aware of that and it's an unusual situation they're dealing with.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
So I think a member of the public mentioned the, the profit percentage for another city, likely you, or may, or maybe another city is 9%, but for ours, it's 17%. Could you please clarify that?
So the calculations are run through the methodology. The methodology includes a cap on certain aspects. So for this year, the cap is on cost of operations. So even if their cost of operations are above a certain amount, we're only going to provide revenue up to that cap. So in a sense, that's a limit built into the methodology. And we do have our consultants, I assume at least one of them is on Zoom if we need extra help describing specifics of the methodology.
People's concern is, are we getting a short end of the deal? Meaning that our, is Recology getting, getting more profit from Cupertino than another city? So if that could be clarified.
Yeah, I, I guess I just want to remind council that, you know, that this, that we are contractually obligated to compensate Recology. This contract has already been negotiated. The question for council is, is how much of city funds should be used to smooth rates for customers? And so that, that is certainly a question that you have discretion to either accept the staff recommendation or do something different. But we are contractually obligated to, to, to compensate Recology as set forth in the agreement. And that, that's not, that, you know, changes to that or not before council tonight.
Thank you. I, I'm going to take some time to talk. I want to emphasize our city attorney's words. The, this is contracts, I think I personally was here approving it. It was December 2020. And I believe Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Moore were here. The three of us actually went through the contract, approved it, and everything's building. It, this maximum, there's things in there. We're here not to debate about the contract. We are here to say how much we want to subsidize our residents according to contract. If we want to have a new contract, I think that's another item to talk about it. Today, we're here to really say we are doing it according to our contract. We have consultant that verifies Recology's numbers. And we are saying here, we have, actually, our city is forcing increases on utilities, including Recology. So we build in a amount of money so we can subsidize our, our residents. And the money is not in the general fund, general fund. It is on a specific money that's set aside for this purpose. Is that right?
That's correct. Fund 520 is specific for these purposes.
So because of that, the, the staff is recommending we use that to subsidize our, our, our residents' fees. So that is lower to $2.1, $2.01 per month?
$2.01.
Yeah, so the council here can decide to say we can subsidize more or less. We're not here to debate the contract. Am I understanding clearly? Okay, so I really like, thank our city attorney to bring us back. Anything we want to talk about Recology or Sunnyvale or other cities do, I think that should be another item. By the way, in May, I did go and tour the Sunnyvale site upon, you know, once we talk about it. I think we were all invited to tour. I don't know how many of my council members went, but I did, went to tour the Sunnyvale sites to, they can put another 50% of compost off the garbage. And so that's another item to discuss. Here, we are talking about whether we want to sub, agree on the staff recommendation to subsidize, to authorize Number 2. We're not debating the contract. So I'm hoping we can bring this back to council. So I am going to open up for council discussion again. If there is no council discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I'll move the staff recommended action.
And I'd like to have a second. Councilmember Moore, your hands up.
I actually wanted to make a couple of comments before we go to vote.
You have 20 seconds. Let's bring a motion, then we can discuss it. Let's bring a motion, then we can discuss it. How's that? Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, so now we're open for discussion. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So before we vote, I just want to make sure everyone now understands that, that we will be coming back to the public asking for your rates to increase further in order to have the waste diversion, and that amount has been estimated at $5 to $8. So you can take the increases that you have in the table, add those numbers on, and get an idea of what your bill is going to be in the future. And I'm estimating it at $49.52 a month. If you include the subsidy, it'll be a little bit lower for you. I am concerned about the franchise fee not having a specified use with the Nexus study, and the concern is that that money goes directly into the general fund. The, the franchise fee is calculated going 12% times the gross receipts for Recology minus the solid waste, the resource recovery fund. When I read the contract for item 7.2 closely, I don't see that using the, the funds specifically to smooth our rates just for residential customers is, I don't see that language specified in there. I, I think in the future, if that's what we want to do, make sure it's spelled out very clearly. When I looked in the budget to see then where that money was going, I could not see in the budget that it was already delineated that we are, we have been smoothing with that fund. And I did have a question about the approximately $1.3 million for contract services within Fund 520 in the budget, and I asked what those contract services are, and I have not been answered. So I would like to hear about that. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
Yeah. Thank you for actually a very good comparison table in the staff report. I want to point out that for Palo Alto, the smaller card is $27. Bigger card, 30 gallon, is $50, almost twice as much. I hope that when this comes back, when we have to consider this $5 to $8 increase, we have a bigger difference between a smaller card, 20 gallon versus 30, because right now, the difference is like $3. Then that this way, people who are financially more difficult could have the option of using a smaller card without being impacted by the future increase. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we have no further comment from our council members, I'd like to entertain a vote, please.
The motion carries with more abstaining.
It is almost 8:18. Do we need a little recess? Or our council members are okay to continue to go? We're okay to go? Okay, okay, continue to item number eight. Item number eight is to accept Silicon Valley Clean Energy Community Resilience Grant in the amount of up to $233,963 to purchase two electric vehicle autonomous renewable charger, EVARC portable solar-powered charging systems. And this item, do we have a staff report or just answer questions?
No, no staff report on this. Mayor will respond to questions. This is a simple grant for two vehicle chargers that are solar-powered.
May I know who pulled this item? From what, council? Who pulled number eight?
Councilmember Moore.
Councilmember Moore, I'll give you the floor first.
Great, thank you. So this, this is a pretty interesting project. I don't know if you have the ability to have a screenshot of what this solar-powered charger would look like. I would appreciate that so people know. And I turned in a number of questions. I don't know if you had a chance to see them and respond to them. So question one, Attachment B states that these units are going to be rotated every two months. I'm going to assume that you need to have some staff training on that, and are they going to provide that for you? I'm just kind of concerned about ongoing costs. And then I can just, I can, I don't know. Did you see my?
I, I did. I think I saw the, I saw the answers to it.
There are them. Okay, so perhaps you've got that.
The answers were provided in the supplemental materials for the meeting.
Okay, so would you be able to provide that? Do you, are you aware of the, the answers now?
Yeah, so for, on the training question, the answer is yes. So we'll be training when the units are delivered.
Okay, and then when you look at the design of it, they only, I could find that they had a 160 mile an hour wind design. What about the seismic portion?
Yeah, they, they provide, we provided a structural engineers' calculations associated with, or certification associated with the product. So you have that in the supplemental material.
Okay, excellent. And then the last one that is kind of important to me is what level of the charger is this going to have? Is it going to be a Level 3 charger, fast charger, or what? It'll be 2?
A Level 2, yeah.
That works. Okay, thank you. And then kind of when I think about it being on this property here, because it has an angle to it, I was wondering where you're thinking it would be actually located, because you need to tilt it towards the sun, and I was thinking putting it near the cricket field actually makes more sense. However, they're playing cricket. I don't know if there's ever stray, you know, stray cricket balls that are going to hurt this device.
As we located it to different facilities, we'll look at each location and find the spot that makes the most sense. With respect to the cricket field, that seems like it may be a good location, but it'd probably be on the opposite side of the drive aisle, just because these tend to face southward, or we should say face the, the direction of the, the vehicle lane.
Okay, and I was wondering if you, if you plan on coming to council with regards to disaster charging? Oh gosh, like a plan for it, because I, I appreciate that we're getting these two. However, at a Level 2 charger, for the number of people who are going to be needing it, that have electric vehicles within the city, I could see there being a really long line for, for this. So is there some kind of plan perhaps to even have like a permanent solar carport structure at some location?
There will be future plans for other solar projects throughout the city at various facilities. For these, for these items, we don't necessarily envision them being for emergency EV charging. They have, they'll have other abilities so that people can potentially charge their cell phones or other necessary gear that we could potentially utilize to move in different locations.
So you're, you're not thinking about this as being for like a disaster preparedness?
This, this could be used for a disaster preparedness. It could be used for charging vehicles, but again, there could be a very long line, and there may also be, you know, potentially other needs such as providing the ability for people to charge cell phones or, or other things. When it comes to the emergency, it'll depend on what the emergency is and what the needs are, and because of the portable, the portability of these units, we can locate them where that need is.
Okay, thank you, because I, I think that since we're moving to no longer having the gas-powered vehicles in, I think, 2035, that we're, we, we need to think about how we're going to be charging our, our vehicles in, in the event of a disaster. And I, I do appreciate this first step in that we got this grant. I think that's wonderful, and hopefully it, it works out very well and, and that it's the start of, of creating a, some kind of a grid location, a microgrid for our city to protect the residents. Thank you.
Okay, if we have no other council questions, I'd like to open up for public comments. Do we have any cards?
I have no cards, mayor, and I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, seeing none, I'm in the closed public comments period. I would like to entertain a motion, please.
I'm happy to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
So moved by Councilmember Chow, second Councilmember Frum. If there's no discussions, let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we're moving to, do we need a break? I'm going to ask one more time. We're going to move to public hearing, which could last a little longer. Let's take a five-minute break, and we're coming back with 8:30. It's 8:32. We're going to public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. The subject is municipal code amendment to Chapter 19.76 and a conditional use permit and parking exception for the use of a former public school site by a pre-kindergarten through ninth-grade private educational facility and associate categorical exemption under CEQA. In the city of Cupertino, Grace Stannett, on behalf of Tessellations, location BA-zoned public building properties in Cupertino, 1170 Yorkshire Drive, APN number 362-08-001. And may we have a staff report?
Yeah, mayor, thank you very much. We have our community development team led by Emmy Sugiyama that are here to make the presentation for us.
Okay, and I just, Luke Connolly, Assistant Director of Community Development. I just wanted to add a couple of words before Emmy's going to do the presentation tonight. So happy to be here, Mayor Way, members of the council. The project we're going to be considering tonight, Tessellations, it involves really two components. I know this will get covered, but I just want to make it clear at the beginning, it involves both a municipal code text amendment and a conditional use permit request, which would be contingent on that code change going into place. One other aspect I think that distinguishes this project, it's been on file as an application just a little over three months, so it got to this hearing body fairly quickly, went to the Planning Commission three weeks ago. The reason for that is that this use is already operating on the site. So just wanted to be clear, I think everybody is aware of that, but those are some distinguishing factors from what we would typically have for a use permit up for consideration. So those were just my opening comments. I will turn the presentation over to Emmy now, and happy to answer questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Good evening, councilmembers. Emmy Sugiyama, planning staff, and I'm here today to discuss the request from the city of Cupertino for the municipal code amendment, and then a request from Tessellations for the use permit and parking exception. And if we could have the slide up. Thank you. All right, so the municipal code amendment is proposing a modification to Chapter 1976, which would clarify the conditionally allowed uses on BA-zone sites, specifically allowing privately operated public serving uses. This would codify the historical practices of the city, which allowed for use, private uses on BA-zone sites, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit with review by the Planning Commission. The use permit and parking exception are specifically related to the use of the former Regnar Elementary School site for a private school. This is located at 1170 Yorkshire Drive in the BA zoning district. The applicant, Tessellations, is proposing a pre-K through ninth-grade operation for 300 students and 85 staff with an after-school program for up to 125 of those students. They are also proposing a summer school with 300, up to 300 students and 60 staff, as well as both large and small school-related events. The majority of these operations would take place on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For drop-off and pickup, the applicant is proposing the use of the existing parking lot loop for drop-off. They are having students dropped off at 8:00 a.m. and then picked up, for the majority of them, at 3:15 p.m. Both the drop-off and pickup would be monitored and facilitated by school staff. The applicant is also proposing a parking exception to accommodate the required 148 parking spaces through alternative means. They propose 20 new spaces on the site, which would result in 67 spaces on the property. Here you can see the location and the layout for those 20 proposed spaces. In addition, they are also proposing a satellite lot for the remaining 81 required spaces at the New Life Church off of McClellan Road. They would have shuttles running from this site to the school site. For events, they're proposing the use of the blacktop space on campus to accommodate up to 100 additional spaces. At their November 14th meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the municipal code amendment and recommended approval of the use permit and parking exception in a four-to-one vote. A summary of their discussion is provided in tonight's staff report. And then based on that discussion from the Planning Commission, staff has proposed two additional conditions of approval. The first addresses the potential for future application for permit parking by the neighborhood, and this would require Tessellations to cover the costs for up to 75 residences. The second condition addresses the timing of use of the proposed shuttle service. This condition requires the use of shuttle services if it is determined by both the Public Works Director and the Community Development Director that the parking associated with the private school is creating a public nuisance to the surrounding neighborhood. And with that, staff recommends that your council find the proposed actions exempt from CEQA, conduct the first hearing of the ordinance, approve the conditional use permit, and approve the parking exception. And then I believe that the applicant also has a presentation tonight.
Okay, please, I'm going to invite the applicant to make the presentation now, please.
Thank you, Emmy. Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, City Council. First, I want to thank you for hearing us. As someone who's dedicating his life now to a specific community, I appreciate your service to the Cupertino community. My name is Grace Stannett. I'm the head of school at Tessellations, and I'm going to go really fast because I'm supposed to do this in eight minutes. Next slide, please. We are a nonprofit progressive school serving the gifted population. We are applying for a permit for pre-K to ninth. Eventually, that will move back to pre-K to eighth as we move our high school to a, as of yet, undetermined different site. Next slide. I'm not going to read this to you because it's long. The point to see here is our definition of giftedness is based on the Columbus Group definition. Asynchronous development is the key word here. That means kids that are, if you will, bumpy. They are ahead, sometimes very far ahead, in certain areas. That might be academics, like math or literacy, or it might be non-academic, like art or creativity or abstract thinking. Next slide, please. These kids have different academic needs. We utilize experiential education. We study fewer things more deeply. That makes the work more meaningful. Not much lecture, almost no repetition, no worksheets, low homework, and a connection to nature. We meet them where we are. We have nine grades of kids right now. We have 14 levels of math, going all the way up to AP Statistics in eighth grade. The social-emotional learning is just as important as the academics. To facilitate that, we have a small class size, maxing out at 18, and two teachers. It's a non-competitive environment. We don't pit the kids against each other. We don't give normal grades. Instead, we just utilize narrative reports. Our kids tend to be internally motivated rather than externally, so. There are many special needs populations in the world, and this is one of them. So often, special needs means a learning difference or something. In our case, it's the other end of the spectrum, but their needs still are different. This population is at risk if not served. They are especially prone to mental health issues, underachievement, dropping out, and worse. So this school must exist. Much of what's important in the world today, I would argue, is happening when teams of spiky people, asynchronously developing gifted people, many of whom live in Silicon Valley, work together. This is the audience we are serving. Next slide. We emphasize work in the outdoors, so our kids are outdoors at least once a week. Often, our nature campus here is at the beach. Next slide, younger kids. Next slide. Younger kids. Next slide. About our community, we tend to be other-oriented. This is common in the gifted population, high empathy. We leave things in better stead, whether that's a conversation, a person, a planet, or a premises. Next slide. We come from all up and down the peninsula. Since we have a specialized school, people travel to be with us. At the beginning of our year, five percent only were from Cupertino. Next slide. This is relevant to CUSD's choosing us, because they wanted to make sure we would not negatively impact the CUSD system. This year, nine students compared to fourteen thousand in CUSD are in K to eight, so we are not even a drop in the bucket. Even when our high school eventually reaches capacity at another site, we will be stealing only point-five students from Montevista per year, and it's a different population. So I wanted to put to rest the strange rumor that we're trying to put Montevista out of business. That's neither possible nor desired. Next slide. What have our efforts been so far in terms of parking and traffic? They've been extensive. These are just for the staff. Heavy carpooling, biking and walking. We've moved our campuses to that, moved our extra buses to that New Life site. We've utilized the blacktop for events and even for large tours. We've tested the shuttle. We don't actually need it now, but it's ready to pop into action as soon as we, as soon as we need to. It is worth reiterating that, based on the staff report, the conditional use permit is exempt from CEQA and thus exempt from a traffic study. And so I think that's for you to approve today. Next slide. These are some pictures from the last week. This is how busy the street is. We have no cars on the street. Not one on these. Next, next picture, please. These are from yesterday, when Vice Mayor Mohan visited. This was actually during a workshop for prospective kindergartners, when we had many visitors to the site. Even they were not parking on the street. So we've made extensive efforts to keep the street very clear. Next slide. I can't play this video, but it does show us, it does show coming up Rainbow Road, and I've taken ten of these in the last week. They're pretty much all this way. There are very few cars on the road. Our, our community knows to use Rainbow instead of Bub. We're starting a van pool soon, which should help even more. Our carpooling numbers are high. We use tech to match up kids with cars in the afternoon, so that's a very efficient process. And more and more families are actually moving to the neighborhood so that they can walk and bike. In many ways, we're outperforming some of the public schools. Commissioner Linskog said they celebrated when they had twelve percent walking and biking, and we're getting very close to getting to twelve percent as a commuter school, so that's pretty exciting. Next slide, please. We recently did a neighborhood survey. This is the area, twenty-two, two-hundred-and-twenty houses. Only twenty-five responses so far, but we did learn that eighty percent of them use the campus and seventy percent for exercise. Next slide. Here's the most interesting question we asked. What do you think about parking and traffic in the neighborhood? The blue, the most, the most common response. I've always been satisfied with the parking situation. Red is, I was annoyed when you moved in, but it's a lot better now. Thank you for your patience, I say to them. Orange is, I'm slightly annoyed, but hey, I live near a school, so it's to be expected. Green is frustrated, and purple wishes we didn't exist. Next slide, please. We are a responsible and good business to have in Cupertino. Our family attrition is four percent compared to the state independent school average of eleven percent. Job applications last year were seventeen hundred, higher than that. When other heads of school hear that, they ask me if my decimal point is in the wrong place. We're a good place to work, and that's known now. That's good for Cupertino. Next slide, please. We're proud to be in Cupertino. We've always been in Cupertino. We also hope that you're proud that we're here. In less than four years, we came from nothing to be one of the most sought-after schools in the Bay Area. Applications are through the roof. We are beacon to gifted educators nationwide. You will hear from, from other speakers today that this school does need to exist, and hopefully, we're another thing that makes Cupertino very special. We respectfully request that you approve our conditional use permit and our parking exception. Next slide. I'm gonna close with some cards from our kindergartners welcoming our preschoolers. Next slide. Here's the last one, and the artist with some of his friends. I managed to do that in seven minutes. So I'm looking forward to hopefully having the chance to respond to any questions and comments that callers in might have or the council might have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the staff and for the principal of Tessellations' presentation. I'm gonna open up for council questions. Council questions, raise your hand if you have questions.
Mayor?
Yes.
This might be a good time to ask if there are any ex parte disclosures.
Oh, that's correct. Okay. I'm gonna ask the council if you have any experta, the expert, how do you say that? Ex parte meeting with either the applicant or Cupertino Union School District.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to disclose an ex parte communication. I did meet with the head of the school yesterday and got a tour of the school and the premises.
Thank you. Any, any council members? I wanna ask, I met you a long time ago at a corner by accident. Does that count as an ex parte? Okay. All righty, so that's, that doesn't count, that's why. Okay. Thank you, so I'm going to bring back for council for questions. Council member Phil?
No, I just had one, one possible disclosure that the topic did briefly come up in the two-by-two CUSD City Council meeting.
Understand. Okay. So I'm gonna ask for council questions. So I'm gonna open up the question. I have a question. Do you have, do you have a data? How many of your staff live in Cupertino, close to Cupertino? How many commute into Cupertino through, you know, our major freeways and?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't actually have the data about what percentage of our staff live in Cupertino. I do know that one of our staff has moved close specifically so that she can walk to work, so we have that. And our staff comes from as wide as Half Moon Bay to Santa Cruz, so they're quite spread out. If I'm guessing, I would say we're probably higher than our students, but it's probably only something like ten to twenty percent of our staff live in Cupertino proper.
Okay, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I should have.
That's okay, and I can, I can find the answer for you and get it back to you if it's helpful.
Okay, I'm asking because I think if Cupertino or surrounding areas supporting more housing, that would accommodate teachers, not just your teachers, but also our own public school teachers, that would be a good thing.
Sure, yeah, agree. And I mean, it, it, at a teacher's salary, it's difficult to live in many cities in the Bay Area, so we're doing our best to pay our teachers as well as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Should I stay up here, or, okay?
Please.
All right.
Rachel?
Hi, thank you for a really, really great presentation, and we are proud that you choose Cupertino to be home. And I, I'm, I think that you have shown your, you are willing to work with the community to address issues, and you have done a lot. But then, I think things come up. So in case people might have any concern in the future, how the community can reach out to you? Do you have something on the website to help? Or do you plan to do anything to bring the community with the school together?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, it's a great question. One, we do have already community members that simply kind of wander in and talk to us at the office. So the office is always open, and they are always welcome to do so. In our recent survey, we asked for emails, and we said if you would like to be on a mailing list of our events, we would be glad to include you. So we're forming that now. It's a small list, but hopefully it will grow over time. We also have, we have had a welcome coffee just for the neighborhood, and we will keep having those. And we are hoping also to invite the neighborhood to certain events if they're interested. So obviously, that will depend on the event. But there is also information on the website. We're very responsive, and so those, those inquiries do not go into a black hole somewhere. We, we do respond to them. So if someone's trying to get in touch with us, it's really quite easy.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Council member more, please.
Okay, thank you. So I have a quick question for staff, and perhaps I'll need to wait for the answer. But it's with regards to, should there be any change in this, in the signage? My concern there is that I've seen with the quasi-public buildings that they, they can have some pretty significantly large signs, like, like a church, for instance, based on their frontage that they have. And some of these properties are, have a lot of frontage, and they can put a very large sign. So I think it is municipal code nineteen point one-zero-four-point-one-six-zero for ground signs. I'm just wondering if there is some plan to change the signage at some point? What rules would they then be falling under? So that we're not surprised down the road. Thank you.
Okay, I, I can try to answer that on. One of the other aspects of the project is the site is still owned by the school district. So essentially, when it was a public school, it had, you know, say, twice the students of this, but the city never regulated it. There was no permit ever regulating this property, whether it was a use or development issue, including signage. And while the use permit is covering the operation of the school, any changes to the site would still be going through the state architect's office because of the ownership of the property. So what I would ask, since we have the applicant here as well, is the question of signage.
Our signage is actually, is, is outlined in our lease, and so we've actually changed our signage now, and it basically exactly is the same exact size as the Cupertino. We, we built our little block exactly the same size as the Cupertino Unified Block that you're probably used to seeing outside of schools. So there's that sign, and then there's the sort of announcement sign at the front of the property, and we are not planning on changing that. If we wanted to change that, we would have to ask CUSD, but I can tell you now, there are no, no plans to change that. It's a, it's a little bit of a pity that Chris Jew is not able to be here tonight. I, we have, we have what we think is a very strong and healthy relationship with CUSD. We are a nonprofit that will be contributing thirty-five million dollars to the city over the next ten years, or hopefully seventy-five over the next twenty. And so it's in both parties' interest to play very nice with each other, and so far, that has gone very well.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions from the council? Council member Cheryl?
So there is, so there are currently three hundred students.
Currently, ma'am, there are only a hundred and eighty-eight students. We are applying for a permit for up to three hundred as we expand. The event, the largest size that Regnar was, was over six hundred.
Yeah, so do you have plans to expand even beyond three hundred to five hundred?
Oh, we have plans to build a high school, but that would be on another, as of yet, undetermined site.
But on this site?
On this site, no, ma'am.
Because eighteen students per class, I guess you don't have enough classrooms to even expand.
Well, we, there is more room on the site for stu-, the classrooms are rated for about thirty students, but we only put eighteen in them. So that's, that's why we're running at approximately half of what CUSD ran the site at. Does that make sense?
Yeah. But then there is a potential to grow from three hundred to five or six hundred, but you don't have a plan right now.
I would say no, because we're applying for a permit for three hundred. So if we wanted to grow, I suppose we would have to come back for a permit, but.
Yeah, that's my question, actually, to staff. In case there, there is plan to grow, they will need to apply for another permit?
Yes, that, that is correct. The, the numbers described in the staff report and the resolutions, Tessellations has not reached those numbers yet of three hundred students and eighty-five faculty, but that's what the permit would be capped at. So if there was a future plan to increase the student population or the faculty, that would require a permit amendment.
Okay, great, that's good to know. Thank you.
It's actually, in terms of our philosophy on the school, we don't really want any more than three hundred students just for kind of an emotional safety and comfort with each other perspective. There's social evidence that that's a really great number to stay at in terms of the population knowing each other.
Thank you, Council member Cheryl. If there's no more questions. Actually, Grace, I have one more question for you. I think, I remember the time I met you at the corner. There was a resident there. I don't think it ended too well.
It did not.
And, and I really wanna say, you know, building good relationships with our neighbors is very, very important. Do you have plans to do that, to continue that relationship building?
Yes, and I think we've done admirably so far. We actually have several members of the community that are planning to come in and teach volunteer classes to our kids. We meet with them pretty much every day. I'm still there when, when people come in for exercise or leave in the morning. And so we're getting to know the residents slowly but surely. And I think our interactions to date, obviously, some people are still upset about parking, but overall, the majority of our interactions are trending very, very positive. So there are a lot of people to hear, happy to hear the sound of children in the neighborhood again. And so we're very grateful for their acceptance.
So thank you, Grace. I guess you're staying here, I think Vice Mayor Mohan has her light on. Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yeah, I had a question about the shuttles, and I thought I saw something on the slide from, that the staff presented, that there has to be some kind of an approval from Public Works for the shuttles to work.
I think the way it's conditioned is at present, and it's also because you're not at three hundred students yet, but there's really no need right now, because you're not getting any on-street parking through the carpooling and what's the smaller staff size. What, what we're looking at is that if it was determined in the future as they approached three hundred students and the eighty-five faculty, mostly the faculty, because that would be the daytime parking. Students aren't driving, they're getting dropped off. But if there were determined to be a need, then the shuttle service would go into effect. I think at, at present, you already have a lease on the property and the availability, so the parking is available right now.
And we've tested the service. So we've, we've run a, we've run a test of the shuttle service to make sure it was viable in terms of traffic times.
So is, is there a, a process that, an additional process to approve the shuttles by Public Works when, if the need arises?
I think the, the need would be defined, that it would be the director of Public Works or, and/or Community Development would make that determination. So we would need to see if there were impacts, say, we were getting complaints from the neighborhood about daytime parking Monday through Friday. We would assess that and then determine that shuttle would need to go into effect. So it's part of the approval now, but because there's, there's no need with cars parking in the neighborhood currently, that's why it's not operating. If it were determined that there were a need, then that would kick in. I think the second part of that is, and it's outlined in the staff report, is that even when we went to Planning Commission, there had been a request from the neighborhood to have permit parking for the blocks surrounding the school. So that would have pretty much prohibited non-residents from parking on those blocks Monday through Friday up to about four PM. So the permit parking, in conjunction with the shuttle, pretty much would eliminate the ability for anybody to park Monday through Friday during daytime hours in that neighborhood. But I just think for, at, at present, with, I think you have about a hundred and ninety students.
Correct, a hundred and eighty-eight.
And fewer faculty, there isn't a need as of right now for the shuttle to be running.
And some auxiliary points there is that we are not using any of the frontage of the, of the school for parking, and so we've been advised after this, if it goes well, to work with the city on determining whether it is acceptable for us to use the frontage not in front of homes. Certainly, the Regnar School used that. That, that's basically an extra twenty to twenty-four spaces, which, which pushes out the need for the shuttle even further. And I think to date, the residents have actually retracted their request for permit parking, parking now. Is that, is that, can you confirm that?
Yeah, the, the request for permit parking came from the residents and was retracted by the residents. I think leaving it open that if the need were to arise in the near future, that they would want it. So that largely seems to be the case, that when you began operations in August, I think there was more of a parking issue.
Yeah, we were.
Which has lessened, which triggered their resident request to not put it in effect at this time. Because there is a cost, I believe, about forty dollars per year per residence for that. So I concede if that, if that wasn't needed at this time, they probably wouldn't want to be paying the forty dollars per residence.
And the church parking is unutilized at this moment?
Correct, it's a very small congregation. We have the lease there now, we have it going forward. So we used to use that as our main site. So we've already worked out with the church that that would be okay. And I think the, I think the, your staff has also researched and concluded that those parking spaces are available and sufficient.
And last question, other, have you, do you own the shuttles? Or is that something that you will have to purchase?
No, we own the shuttles now. We, we actually have a, a small fleet of vans, because we take our kids to nature campus every week. And so we, we actually need those shuttles. So it would actually be, there would be no additional assets required.
And they are parked in the church parking? And they are parked in the church parking?
Uh, nine of them are parked onsite now, because we use them. We have our extra five now parked on the church, just to have them offsite. And we go get them if we need them. But there are nine that we use on a weekly basis now to get our kids back and forth from Nature Campus. So nine of them are onsite.
So you don't see a need to park on the street, park these shuttles on the street?
Uh, we do not see a need to park the shuttles on the street, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. I think Councilmember Moore has her hands up first, about two and a half minutes.
Just real, real quick question. You, you mentioned potentially parking on the, the street in front of the school. What kind of arrangement is being considered with that?
Right now, we are not, just in an effort to play as nice as possible in the neighborhood. I believe legally at present, we are allowed to park there, because there's no restriction. There's one small area that's yellow for, that was for loading, which we're trying to get changed to white. But that's sort of the next step of the process. But if it would be acceptable to the city, then we would love to use those spaces that are not in front of anybody's house. But we've been advised to work with planning after this meeting on, on that issue. And so for now, we have just left them free. Is that, does that answer your question?
Well, I'm wondering what the, what the neighborhood thinks, thinks of that and where, because we're meeting now, and then it sounds as though there would be some negotiation after.
Sure, I think you'd have to ask the neighborhood, but it, it's, you might also have just to make a reasonable decision in that there's a, you know, there's a whole stretch of, of, of area that is the frontage of the property that we lease, that is not the front of anybody's home. And in fact, some of it is even, doesn't, doesn't even face the front of anybody's home, just sides. So we're open to suggestion there, but we do hope that in the long run, that would be acceptable. But if it's not, we're still okay.
You, Councilmember Chow, you have about one and a half minutes.
Um, so this is regarding traffic safety during drop-off and pickup. My kids have attended alternative schools, so I, they are not neighborhoods, so we have to drop them off. Oftentimes, parents are the problem, because when you have to drop off your kids on time, people tend to be risky. And then, then we, the city have to get the request to provide crossing guards, and we have to pay for that. And then also sometimes the school would request a sheriff to be onsite to kind of police the parents. So what, how would you address these issues?
Well, we frequently send reminders to the parents to, you know, be safe. I would say that parents of K through eight kids tend to be quite safety oriented. And so we have a, we have a very conchy, I like to say that gifted kids give birth to gifted parents. And so they're an empathetic lot. We also, one nice thing about having a high staff-to-student ratio is that we do have extra people out there during pickup and drop-off every day. So we, we do have our own crossing guards out there.
So your staff would do the, be the crossing guards?
We have seven staff onsite in the morning and nine onsite in the afternoon, specifically designated for this service. And so, yeah.
Right, so it won't be a cost to the city and?
I can't imagine so, ma'am, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to use a couple of minutes to actually make my, answer the questions my council member asked, because I talk extensively with the parents, with neighbors there. And the complaint about dropping off is never there. They're very pleased, if I can say, I think the parents or the schools really monitor the parent drop-off. I don't think, I think the major complaint is parking. And so, and also, I did receive one mail from one resident said, "Why don't they park in front of their own place?" So I think when you are pursuing that with the city, and you, and you'll make the, make sure that the neighbors know about it, so that they, 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 they. Because one of the emails I received, it did say, you know, the schools really can park in front of their own frontage, not, so I, I think it is a reasonably rational way to work with the city and work with the neighborhood, see if the neighborhoods agree about.
Yeah, it's certainly something that we would reach out to the neighborhood about before, before we did, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And please be seated, and if there's no more questions, I'd like to open up a public comment. Do we have cards?
Yes, mayor, we have five speaker cards in community hall, and I see two hands raised on Zoom. We have Li Zhang, Tatiana Mejia, and Lakshmi Ayr. Li, is Li Zhang here? Yes. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Li Zhang. I am actually a parent of the Tessalation. My son just started the Tessalation kindergarten this August. Even our family lives in Campbell, so I'm here to share some perspective as a commuting family. When we first moved to Campbell before my son was born, we specifically picked a place to be across street from our local public school and very close to like a private school across our street. We do have the hope we can walk or have our kids bike to his school one day, once he's old enough. But as my son grows, we get to know him better. We understand that he can learn fast and get bored easily, and he is very sensitive. Then he would start walking and talking and losing interest in the school and become disturbance to his classmates and teachers. We don't want that to happen. So while we loved and still love the idea of no commute local schools, and we still hope one day maybe we can do that with Tessalation, we started our journey to look for a school for my son, to best fit his needs for learning and his personalities. So we toured school from Sunnyvale all the way to Los Gatos. And we're just so, felt so lucky that we were able to join Tessalation when they expanded their campus to the Yorkshire address. So, and where he can learn at his own speed and his emotional and intellectual needs being met at his speed. So as a family who lives close to a local school and right across street from our local private school, I totally understand the frustration of traffic from schools. But on the other hand, I have to say, I'm really proud to be part of a safe and a close neighborhood and a trusted community, where outstanding schools, where kids love, learn, play, and grow. So for both my home in Campbell and also our new home in Tessalations. Even we don't live in Cupertino, as commuting families, we absolutely share the same desire to make sure all the streets around school are safe for every car that's driving to the school and also every kid who might be walking or biking to the school, because that can be our own kids and our own cars. We're not just attending a school in Cupertino. As families, we actually eat in Cupertino more. We shop in Cupertino supermarkets and different stores more. We're spending more time in Cupertino. We get to know more families and more people in Cupertino. We actually hire the driver who has sent his own kids to William Regnar, who is actually helping picking my kid after school now. So in summary, my kid, our kids may come and go, but the redwoods, the playgrounds, and the track and field upgraded and maintained by Tessalation will be here to stay. So we thank for letting us become part of your community, and we do hope it to make it better for everyone, including us.
Thank you. And that is your time. And next, we have Tatiana Mejia, followed by Lakshmi Ayr, followed by Gil Doyle. Welcome, Tatiana.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name's Tatiana Mejia. My son turned fourteen last month. We have been at Tessalations for four years in its original Cupertino location and now at the new school. Alejandro is happy, confident, and kind. He has good friends, he feels he belongs, he enjoys learning, he likes his teachers. He doesn't have a phone, and he helps with chores. He's a good kid, and I don't take that for granted. For coming to Tessalations, Alejandro attended three elementary schools. We started our local public school, but by first grade, he was struggling with reading and writing. He got frustrated in class, and I know he was quite a handful. At times, he mastered the material really quickly and got bored and distracted the other students. It seemed to be one extreme or the other. Something had to change, but there were no clear answers. There was no diagnosis to request or individualized learning plan that I could request from the district. It was just a series of tests and evaluations. We tried two private schools in rapid succession, and it was more of the same. Alejandro was demotivated and lonely, and the truth is that so was I. I didn't know what to say when he asked what was wrong with him. I was at my wit's end, and then came Tessalations. I feel lucky to be here. The teachers understand asynchronous learners like my son. They have the training, the time, and the support to bring out the best in these kids. Alejandro will go to high school next year, and I am confident he will be ready. He has learned about himself, and he has learned how to learn. He's a different child, or perhaps it's better to say that he is finally himself. His goals, he wants to go to Nationals with his debate team. He has dreams, he tells me he wants to be a Foreign Service Officer. He's motivated to work hard and to try his best. We were really lucky, and I hope that other families have the same good luck. This is a population segment at risk, there are not a lot of choices, and Tessalations has been a haven for us. I hope you will approve the conditional use permit and the parking exception for this much-needed school. Thank you.
Thank you, Tatiana. Next, we have Lakshmi Ayr, followed by Gil Doyle, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Lakshmi.
Good evening, mayor, council, and guests. I'm Lakshmi Ayr, a parent at Tessalations. I have two sons, eleven and nine years old. My family moved to Cupertino from the East Coast four years back because of the city's reputation for a vibrant community and enriching education. Subsequently, we experienced both public and private schools in the South Bay, but I can say with confidence that none met my children's needs as well as Tessalations does. Being a gifted school, the philosophy is about embracing the whole child, both their strengths and weaknesses. With the low student-to-teacher ratio, my kids get tailored support to address their unique needs. Now, my sixth grader works on twelfth-grade math, while my fourth grader works on eighth-grade math. But this is not just about my children. In our school, there are many children who are academically exceptional, and some have certain struggles and challenges like anxiety, A D H D, dyslexia, dysgraphia, et cetera. Tessalations truly understands these children. I feel blessed to have the school in our community, because this is a population that does not have any other viable option in the area. It is a matter of great pride that such a school is available in our midst, and that it is a magnet for more young families to come to our city. I fully recognize that the revival of the former Regnar School campus after a few years of closure is causing concern to our neighbors. I assure you that I have firsthand experience driving to and back from Tessalations for drop-offs and pickups regularly. The process is very orderly, with staff ready to receive and send off the kids within moments. Despite the concentration of several schools in the area, Tessalations has streamlined the process. Most families use I-85 and Rainbow Drive to approach and avoid the constriction on Bub. Additionally, check-ins with Dash Pass reduces the wait time. So the school has demonstrated adaptability and responsibility by making additional parking arrangements, such as using the blacktop for parking, and timely communication with families regarding the newer parking regulations. Consequently, I never find the need to park on the street during pickups. Moreover, I'm personally aware of several families who actively participate in carpooling, further mitigating the impact on local traffic and parking needs. Given this firsthand testimony, I urge the city council to grant our school, a responsible and integral member of our community, the conditional use permit and parking exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gil Doyle, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rhonda Frye. Welcome, Gil.
Yeah, good evening. When Tessalations T opened in August, there was insufficient parking at the school for a staff of seventy-plus. Staff who couldn't park in the school's lot parked on streets in front of the school. This continued for two months. To begin, neighbors around the school talked to both CUSD and T about building more parking at the school. When it became clear that neither had plans to do that, we organized a campaign for permit parking. Concern in the neighborhood was such that eighty percent voted in favor. On October ninth, we paid the permit parking steady fee and enabled city engineers to start their work. At about the same time, the city's Planning Division talked to T about the city's C U P and parking requirement. On about October twelfth, T abruptly pulled its cars off our streets. It took the neighbors a while to find out what had happened and to digest the change. Once we did, we decided that it was necessary to reconsider the need for permit parking. Eighteen percent of us voted to stay the course and let the city council consider our request. Seventy-nine percent voted to give T a chance to prove itself. We would reapply later, we decided, if necessary. When the city made compliance with its parking requirement, a condition for permission to operate at Regnar, T suddenly found a powerful incentive to quickly and efficiently do for itself what for two months it had failed to do for its neighbors. In short order, it got its cars off our streets. It did this, of course, for the C U P that it must have in order to operate at Regnar. We're concerned about what T might do once it has that C U P in pocket. Just a few days ago, T asked the neighbors to answer a few survey questions. It asked us what we thought about parking and traffic in the neighborhood. One of the multiple choices offered was this, quote, "I'm slightly annoyed, but I understand that there will always be a school here, so the parking and traffic come with the territory," unquote. The survey's author may have felt that the sort of people who buy homes near public schools ought to understand their obligation to suffer parking and traffic for the schools that serve them. But of course, T doesn't serve us, and the neighbors here are in no way obliged to put up with parking and traffic that are a result of inadequate onsite parking and clients who stream here from all over the Bay Area. The neighbors around the school will watch and wait now to see what happens when the city formally grants its C U P to T. In the months to come, T will host more open houses. The school will grow, and a year on, we think that we've again got a problem with T's staff or parents crowding our street, then we will reapply for permit parking. By the way, may I make a few comments as a neighbor about Tessalations? Can I do that?
Your time has elapsed, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rhonda Frye, followed by Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. This has been a very interesting discussion with the school and the neighbors. My husband actually attended Regnar and Jolliman. As you know, Jolliman is now a park, and Regnar. So when Regnar was closed, my husband and I had a lot of discussions about the closures and his memories of going to the school. I'm glad to know that this school is serving a deserving population of children. I really didn't know much about Tessalation, I've just been hearing more about it. My brother was actually diagnosed as gifted in second grade. He became a fisheries biologist, but he did repeat second grade, as was, at that point, it did help him. I just had one question. In terms of, this school site is leased from the Elementary School District, and I'm just concerned about the parking on the blacktop. Is that going to damage the blacktop long-term? I understand it's a good potential to take care of parking, but it's not designed for parking. It is designed for athletics, is what my, remember, the blacktop areas were, lunchtime, et cetera. My husband's stepmother is a retired school teacher from Barriessa District, and she spent a lot of her time on the blacktop supervising children during lunchtime. If you all could comment on that, if the blacktop is damaged, who pays for the repairs? I don't understand the, obviously, there is a lease with the school. In terms of the parking situation, I'm glad to see that there is something that is being worked out between the neighborhood and the school. And hopefully, as we go along, this will be a mutual relationship that does not have any other issues. I am wondering about if the school does decide to grow. Where are they planning on moving? Where are they planning on moving the children if they do want to have a larger group of children, et cetera? If you all could discuss, that would be helpful. I am hopeful that we are not going to be facing other school closures in Cupertino in the high school and the elementary school districts. I think it's important to realize that school populations go up and down. I have lived here my whole life. I am a graduate of Fremont, I mean, the elementary school district and the high school district, and things come and go. So, I'm, I, good luck to the T school and good luck to the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Rota.
Well, it just so happens I showed this slide earlier this evening about the strategic goals that were outlined in the budget, including public engagement and transparency. We didn't have this in this case. We had this, the CUSD went ahead and leased this property to a business, and they didn't, they didn't run it by Cupertino. And, you know, if it weren't a school, I think that the response might be quite different. It sounds like the school does great things. I'm really, I'm just concerned about the whole optics of it, right? They went ahead, leased this property, and now, all of a sudden, we have to fix their problem. And from the perspective of the community, we look at the quality of life, air quality, public safety, et cetera. So, I want to do what we can to maintain the strategic goals that we have set up as a city. And I talked with a previous speaker who had run out of time, and I said, what, you know, what, what had you wanted to say? And he said, you know, I, he was a little, my words befuddled, why the school hadn't considered using that parking in front of the school? Why they, you know, wound up having to go through this whole thing with permanent parking? Permit parking, permit parking is really obnoxious, and that's really something that we don't want to be imposing on the neighbors. The other thing that I, I didn't hear the whole presentation tonight, I apologize. But I didn't happen to hear, and maybe, I hope you can ask that question if it hasn't been mentioned. Right now, they're using a, an underutilized parking lot at a church. What happens if that church gets repurposed? Those things have happened. I don't know whether the church is on the housing element. I'm seeing shaking heads, no. I know that the lease is just a couple of years. The church is, obviously, the church parking lot is underutilized. So, what happens if the church turns into housing? Where is that overflow parking going to come from? Those are things that we need to anticipate. It's not our job to fix their problem. And, and I will tell you, I, I live on a road where the end of the road, the cul-de-sac, used to be a church, and the church is no longer there, and it's in Cupertino. So, churches can turn into housing, they can change, and, and we need to be on this to figure out what's going to happen if that provisional parking lot goes away. Thank you.
Thank you, Rota, and our final speaker is Louise Sadadi, and then we will move to Zoom.
Hello. I'm Louise Sadadi again, and my confession is that I live right next to the school. The school actually, I live right up against the field of the school, so I'm on its back boundary. And I bought the house because I could, I had a fence into the school, and I could open the door, and my daughter would literally, one moment, be in the house, in our property, and the next moment, be in the school field. So, you know, it was like wonderful. Anyway, we've had absolutely no problems with the students at Tessalations or the staff. And I'm speaking as a neighbor that lives adjoining behind, not in front. However, we neighbors around the school have received invitations for a coffee meetup with the Tessalations at the school, with the staff, you know, and the, and the students. I've mentioned that I've lived there for thirty-four years. And the school population now is very quiet. We've lived next to Regnart Elementary for thirty-two years. And we used to hear the sounds of lots of young children during recess and lunch, happily playing and shouting and everything. And I never minded the sound of children laughing and playing, but we heard it. And we would occasionally rarely have a ball come flying over our back fence, you know. And sometimes the children would ask to retrieve it, coming to the front door, and other times, they just, the ball was abandoned. But since Tessalation has come, it's very quiet. And we don't hear the children playing wildly, nor have rare balls come flying over our fence. This is not a complaint. It's just a comment on how quiet and well-mannered the students and the teachers have been in managing the students. We appreciate a school that can accommodate the different needs of children. Many children have a difficult time with mass education, which is really what public education is. The public school teachers are very overwhelmed with the over thirty students and challenges the changes in our society have wrought onto school education. Used to be, you know, a teacher said, "Jump," and the kids would all do exactly that, but now the behaviors are all very different. It's wonderful that we can have a private school privately paid by the parents, whereby students can be taught in smaller groups with teaching individually modified for their needs. The school has demonstrated a willingness to work with the neighborhood. I think we can work collaboratively with, to be a welcoming neighborhood and city. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise, and now we will move to Zoom. We have two hands raised. Babu Shrinivasan and Sanar, welcome, Babu.
Right timing. The meeting started with lack of funds, city running out of funds, and meeting ends with millions in the flow in the next ten years, fifteen years. How is it possible? Is it like anything that you do it just for money, not for the city residents? Is it the city council meeting attended by outsiders rather than Cupertino residents? Does it show the, what do you call, the faith in the city council? Or what is it going on? It is funny. The thing is, what we are talking about is any school, in the first place, if it has to be rezoned, why it was not done, why it was allowed to operate? Is it city sleeping again? Is it something like, not a law? There is no law in this country. I, I'm getting really, really annoyed. The quality, the way the city operates are coming to know how the public operations happens. It, it's weird. It's not the money that matters. It's not the millions or billions that you are going to get as a city. It is the way, it is the law, it is the process that needs to be in place. And you don't encourage, encourage who are living in this area to build a better community of better revenue for the city council. That is why I said, why not you open Costco in a remote place and have a revenue? City council member need to look for increasing revenue, not this way. It is really, really upset. There is not even a traffic study. People are putting at whatever they're cutting. That's fine. We are not worried, but the reality suck. There is a huge accident in, in front of Kennedy and nearby Montavista. After the Tessalation started, it very clearly shows people are under heavy, heavy traffic. And with, even without increasing this numbers, now it's all but traffic is bad. And I don't know why, there is a commission for this to just laugh at it, talk at it, and then approve it, put it to city council. And city council talks, wow, nice school, awesome. This is not the way the city council job is to ensure the current residents' welfare. The future, if you want to encroach, that should be stopped. That should not even come to a discussion out here. It is pathetic, I can say, and people not showing up shows their faith in city council. Probably, city council has to turn their faith and make a face for themselves and care for the city residents. I can't say more than this. And if you think even getting to three hundred is going to be awesome, then if you are looking for thirty million, I think the city will be sold. Thank you. Enjoy, have fun.
Thank you, Babu, and our final speaker is Sanar. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor B and City Council. I must have missed this, but in the agenda item, there appears to be an unrelated item related to a zoning change for all properties that are BA. And I believe there's twenty-four properties in the city currently that are required to have certain restricted use, namely government or public education. And fourteen of those twenty-four are public schools. I did not hear any council member ask about this, so I don't know if the staff report is outdated or this item is still part of this agenda, but I request all council members to take a look at the Moone Code Amendment that is proposing to change current zoning for BA, BQ, and T zones to accommodate a wider range of use. The current use is limited to government, public utility, education, religious, community service, transportation, and recreational facilities. My first question is, can we please have staff separate these agenda items for greater transparency with the public? This Moone Code Amendment has nothing to do with Tessalations, and by embedding it in this Tessalations agenda, as we've seen, no council member has asked about it, no public has asked about it. And secondly, the public time to provide comments is limited, and so is the council members. So, it may build these unrelated sub-items into a common agenda item. It limits the amount of public input and council input that can be offered on these items. I'd like to understand why we need this Moone Code Amendment, and why is it such a broad amendment? That twenty-four properties in the city, or twenty-three rather, are being rezoned under the, under the umbrella of this Tessalations. So, I, I request you to please separate these items and not approve this zoning change and require that this come back as a separate agenda item with public input and adequate time to study it, since no council member has asked about it yet. And secondly, I would like to ask that the start time of Tessalations be reviewed or a staggered start time, preferably before eight, since we now have both Kennedy and Lincoln overlapping with Tessalations about the same time, and the end time also overlaps closely with Kennedy. And so, if we can please request that Tessalations have a staggered start time, that is before, not after, because at eight-thirty, we have Montavista. At eight-thirty, we have Faria, and so we would like to see a staggered start time. And, and finally, I'd like to request that you study the impact of the ninth grade addition. What is the enrollment without the ninth grade versus with the ninth grade? What is the enrollment without the PK versus with the PK?
Thank you, San. That is your time. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close the public comment. Thanks for all the comments. I do believe the applicant can briefly respond to public comments with questions. I do have three questions that I wrote down. One is blacktop. If it's damaged, who's paying for it? And the second one is, if you do grow, where are you gonna move to grow to high school? You could say that. And the third I wrote down is, if the church parking goes away, do you have a backup or any, maybe?
Fun, sorry. I would also respond to Sanar's questions about traffic too briefly. So, with due respect, the maintenance of the blacktop really is a tenant and landlord issue, and so, we are jointly responsible for making sure that we leave the premises in same or better condition, and that applies to the blacktop as well. So, that is part of our lease, and that, that is something that we would work out with our, with our landlord, CUSD. But we are not allowed to leave it in worse condition than we found it. That goes for everything, not just the blacktop. What happens if the church lot gets utilized? With all due respect to the question, lots of things change in the world, and you have to adapt. So, there are many other lots around that we could possibly rent or utilize in the nearby area. So, of course, I think it would be our responsibility to find an alternative lot if that were to come to pass. Or we could proactively do that if we found a better deal on another lot, and that should be okay as well. But it should be our job to make sure that our shuttle service is functional. In terms of where we grow, we don't know yet. We are, I, I, unfortunately, probably, real estate is not really a problem at the moment, and there are plenty of spaces available. So, the idea of finding another suitable and permitted space for a school seems like not one of our large problems at the moment, and we will assault that when the time comes. To address Sanar's comments about traffic, our staggered time has been approved and recommended by CUSD. And so, that was, that time was, our times were determined in conjunction with CUSD. And maybe most importantly, our traffic patterns really do not collide with Kennedy, who is closest. Kennedy clogs up Bud, Bub, and we come in on Rainbow. And in many ways, it just doesn't matter what time we come in because we're not utilizing the same arteries. If Tessalations people come in on Bub, they don't the next day because it's so hard. So, they switch very quickly when that happens of their own accord. I think I've addressed all the questions.
I, I think you did.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Unless Council wrote down any other question. Okay, if there are no, Councilmember more?
I, I just wanted to hear staff comment on the municipal code amendment request. And if you, from the public, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
No, certainly. I'd be happy to address that, as well as the church parking issue that, that got raised. The zoning code amendment to the BA district does apply to all twenty-three BA zone properties, fourteen of which are owned by the school districts. So, all of those zoned areas are being treated alike, but we are not rezoning any properties. This is a code text amendment that would apply to all of them, and what that would enable them to do is what Tessalations is doing now. It would require a conditional use permit, meaning the city would have control through that permit over a private operation, such as a private educational facility, unlike a public school, say, like Regnart. So, the city would permit that use conditionally through this process. The code change to the text is not enabling any other project at this time. So, that's why the code amendment is coming now, is it really is a necessary first step for this project. So, while that change would apply to the other twenty-three sites, there are no pending projects on those sites at this time. If a future user similar to this wanted to go onto a different site, they would go through this discretionary process and have a public hearing at that time to get the conditional use permit. Regarding the church parking, which also came up and was addressed by the applicant, the use permit is tied to this former Regnart site in Tessalations right now. It runs with that property. It would be a condition of Tessalations or any other user that did not have adequate parking to get off-site parking. So, if this church were to be developed five years down the road, an alternate site providing parking would have to meet that need, and you would then say have a shuttle service running from that location to Tessalations. But yes, that could happen, that they would need an alternate location in the future, but that's why the condition is to have the parking. It doesn't necessarily have to be on that church site in future years.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, may I ask one more question? If we were to have a modification to the recommended action in order to have some kind of an update on how the parking and traffic is going in the neighborhood? Do you have any suggestion on a timeframe to have that come back to us?
You know, I really don't at this time. It might also be a better idea to see when Tessalations is more at their, closer to their upper limit of occupancy, to see how that's going. I know certainly, when the use began in August, we received quite a bit of comment from the neighborhood that the school is operational again and that there was parking on the street. So, that's really how we got alerted that this use was underway. That certainly declined over the last several months, so.
May I ask one thing? It seemed as though the neighbor, it sounded almost as if they had to pay some kind of a fee to the city for, for, for something with regards to the parking, permitted parking. Did they have to pay anything to the, I don't know, to the planning department at all? And if they did, how much, how much was? And if they did, how much, how much was that?
I don't, what the permit parking, my understanding, is handled through Public Works and the Transportation Division. And it would involve a fee, I believe it's an annual fee of forty dollars per resident. So that's how the fee has typically been handled. I know there was some discussion is, if that were necessary, could that cost be then picked up by, say, tesolations? Or the user that is essentially causing the need for the permit parking? So that was something that was discussed at the Planning Commission. It's not currently in effect right now. And unlike the three weeks ago when we met on this project, the request for permit parking has been withdrawn at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow, followed by councilmember Fru.
Hi, um, so regarding the current length, what, um, in the staff report, with the municipal code change, future conditional use permit only need to be approved by the Planning Commission, right?
That is correct. The conditional use permit would typically be a Planning Commission action. This came to council tonight, because we also have the zoning code or the municipal code text amendment as well. So for a future project, if that code change was in effect, they would only need to go to Planning Commission for the use permit.
And then the language permitted use is privately operated educational and privately operated public serving uses. So what's the current allowed use? I didn't find the redlined copy of the code.
Yeah, the, the current use is it's tied to the ownership. So say it would be a public school that is operated by a public, a public school district-owned land and their operation of the school. It essentially doesn't address a private use. So even though this is very similar to the public school, since it's a private operator, it's not CUSD itself, that's not addressed in the current code.
So the current, under the current zoning, any BA-zoned property can only be used for public-operated use?
That is correct.
It could be educational, it could be not educational?
Correct. It could be a county, federal, state government, special district, such as the school district, but yeah.
Okay.
It's tied to the ownership and a public operation of the site.
So I, I'm okay with privately operated educational purpose, however, this goes beyond that with amendment. It would include privately operated public serving uses. This could be a wide range of things. You, someone could turn a site into, say, RV parking and say that, "I'm a nonprofit. I'm serving the public." And it could be any number of uses.
Yeah, well, I, I.
And with this change, we are, we could be allowing a lot of things on the BA site.
Well, I think the, the intent of the change is where you have a private use that is really filling something that was traditionally done by a public entity, like in this case, a school.
Yeah, and then in this case, in the future, it won't even come to the council agenda. And the Planning Commission has the right to approve uses on BA sites.
Yeah, well, the Planning Commission, actually, it's, they have the authority to approve the conditional use permit. At this time, though, because the BA language does not allow for a conditional use permit, that's why the whole action has come before the council, because only the council can make a code change.
But the current code only would allow public-operated uses?
Correct. Essentially, the school district would have to open it as a public school again.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to add a little bit of clarity to the parking, permit parking, residential permit parking discussion. There, there is a, a startup fee associated with that, roughly twenty-eight hundred dollars. There is no annual fee. So the ongoing charge, charge is, is, there is not one. We are looking at our fees and charges currently, and we'll be bringing that for discussion shortly with the council and that, so that, that may change at that time, but currently, it's about twenty-eight hundred dollars to get a permit parking program started in a neighborhood.
Is that an annual fee?
That's a one-time.
One-time. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fru?
I realize that we are, have a rather unusual circumstance here. It's not like it's every day that we are authorizing a conditional use permit for a, a former public school site. But in this particular instance, we came to know of it as a city and as a community in terms of the need based upon the school having opened and the neighbors voicing their concern. So do we have any particular lessons learned from this experience that we think that we can use in the future to avoid a recurrence of this type of problem?
The only thing I could think of would be better or more direct communication with school district if something like this were to arise in the future. And, you know, there, there could have been some honest confusion, just because the issue is so new. And I do think the existing language of the code, it is sort of tough to interpret. You, you could almost interpret it that you're limited solely to a public school, or if you're on public land, you could do almost anything you want, which I'm sure that was not the intent. I know, I know most other cities do have provisions for private schools that require use permit, but I agree, the situation that this began operation and we're sort of here after the fact makes it a little more difficult, but it does seem, in my opinion, that the situation got better from the time of operation, but it would have been preferable had the permit been applied four months in advance, and we were taking this to hearing before operation began.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, a question.
So is it possible that we don't make this broad change to the municipal code for one request? I, that's, that's something we shouldn't do. But we allow exception. I think we have existing things we could give exceptions to allow for tesolation specifically? Is that possible? Then we are not making broad changes on municipal code for one request?
Spot, spot zoning is disfavored, and I, I would recommend having this conditional use process available for, you know, future private uses of, of public school sites. So I, I think that, that there's a benefit for, to the city and particularly the school districts for having this process in place more broadly.
If it's limited to educational uses, I'm fine, but the language right now include other?
So that's within council's discretion to make that decision. But I, I, you know, I think staff is recommending having some flexibility for para, you know, private uses of public properties that are essentially parallel to the public use, like this one, which is a private school that has substantially the same types of impacts that the public school that it replaced.
Okay, but we do have a process that would allow exceptions for one site, right?
Again, I would say that spot zoning is, while not per se illegal, is generally disfavored.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, if there's no more questions, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm gonna bring you back for council for a motion in a second and open for more discussions. So do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Because I wasn't looking. Councilmember Fru?
Yeah, so I'll move the staff recommended action and that council waive the reading of the ordinance and direct the clerk to introduce the ordinance by title only.
Yeah, I have a second. It's moved in second. It moved by Councilmember Fru, seconded by Vice Mayor Mohan, and this is the first reading, right?
Uh, this is the first reading. Would, uh, uh, would you like to ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title?
That's what I mean. Can I, can I ask the clerk to read it?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash two-two-five-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter nineteen point seven-six, Table nineteen point seven-six point zero-three-zero, to allow privately operated educational uses and privately operated public serving uses in the BA zoning district.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So we have a motion in a second and open for discussions. And actually, I'd like to start with the discussion on the question asked about the zoning change. And if I understand it correctly, this would allow the city to to, to work with future applications in private schools that operating in public land? So that the city has the authority to really approve it with the permit? Is that why we have encompassing more than just this site, but all the sites?
Yes, that is correct. I think as the city attorney clarified, otherwise, we would end up spot zoning this one property. It would be its own zoning district, which is not a good practice. So this does not allow anything to go in by right. If there were a future use, would all, they would also have to get a conditional use permit that would be required to be approved through the Planning Commission and would be appealable to the City Council.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more comments. Councilmember, I think Vice Mayor Mohan's lights on first. Oh, it's a new light. Vice Mohan, Vice Mayor Mohan, your light is on first, and then Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Chow. Or, yes, right? Okay. Please.
I had a question about the.
Five minutes, please.
I had a question about the code amendment. My understanding is that the code hasn't been updated since nineteen seventy, and that there are already private uses for, for public properties. So we've just sort of let that go without requiring a code change. Am I right in my understanding?
I know this section of the code has not been updated in a long time. This language has been around for, for decades. I believe there were instances back in the eighties that are cited in the staff report where there were use permits approved in this zoning district. But I do think having the language made clear that a use permit is required, it's not optional, but it's required, and defining what things are eligible for that conditional use permit makes this a much cleaner process in the future.
Okay, so you've listed about half a dozen private schools that are already functioning in, in the city. So did they all not get a permit? Did they all operate, operate without, uh, without the need for a permit change or a zoning change?
Yeah, may I clarify if you're referring to the table in the staff report that was provided? Yes, so those are the same nineteen eighties permits that were approved, and I believe at the time they were operating under a minute order of the Planning Commission that was not approved by City Council. So it's, again, a process that's outdated, and we're currently trying to codify it.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Another more?
I'd like to clarify something. Does the City of Cupertino get any revenue from this use of this site?
I would say perhaps more indirectly. I think one of the speakers talked about eating in Cupertino restaurants, things like that. But if you're talking about basic revenue sources, the site is owned by a special district, so would not be paying property tax as a private site would. And so in terms of revenue generation, no, this would not be typical, say, or comparable to a development project or something that's triggering construction fees or things like that.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I just want to comment on a couple of things. I, I appreciate the, the question about the process. I do hope that CUSD is more vocal on what's happening with their, with their sites moving forward. I, I'm not really happy with how this, the process started. I'm, I'm glad that there are being improvements. Overall, I sympathize with the neighbors of this school, because I, I think they were hurt by the closure by CUSD of the Regnart School. And some of them might not qualify or have the funds to be able to attend this school, because it's more unique. On the other side, I do appreciate the tesolations school, that they're providing this resource for the gifted population. I understand that the challenges that parents have with the gifted kids. And what I'm hearing is that the administration is working to be conscientious neighbors after a contentious start, and that they will continue to do so. And I feel pretty confident that if the neighbors are having any issues, that I don't need to have a set, an extra recommended action, number five, to come back in six months or a year, that the neighbors will be here talking with us. And I, I think you probably feel that way as well, that we will hear about it if it's, things aren't going well. Okay, with that, thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
So do we have any definition in state or city code on public serving uses?
We do not currently, no.
So what does that mean?
So this is taken as a, an arm of what is currently allowed on those properties. It's left to the determination of our Director of Community Development to ensure that these are consistent with what would typically be allowed on those sites. So there's discretion in that first, and then obviously the discretion.
So what's typically allowed, for example, if the site was a school, it should only be operated at school? If the site was a school and it's turned into other uses, then it's not allowed?
Well, yeah, I think in, in this instance, we have something that was an elementary school for decades, and it's.
I know in this instance it's different, but we are making a municipal code change that's much broader than intended. So I, my concern is the language is not clear. There is no definition on what's public serving uses. And I think a lot of community members would be concerned if a neighborhood school suddenly turned into other uses, maybe RV parking or serving a different population that is not children. So what limits are there to these uses? I would like to know, and we should at least have a definition on that.
Go ahead, Director Fru.
Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you for that question. Councilmember Chow, through the mayor, if I may. I think it's a valid question, and I would, based on Amy's response earlier, we will look at these public-private uses based on that chart, table provided, with some kind of educational uses. That would be our baseline. So, you know, to, to justify that, an RV parking is consistent with a public use? I think that's a stretch. So as a Director of Community Development, that would not be a use that I would, I would consider. So I would consider other.
The language right now in the code is not clear.
Understood, but I'm, but to answer your question, you asked about what kind of uses would be consistent with a public use. I think referencing that chart for the uses that were approved back in the eighties, educational type of uses would be consistent.
Right, and ultimately, this is a discretionary process that the Planning Commission has authority over, so.
So what other uses were there in the chart? And here, it's, it also says maintain consistency with the intent of the BA district. What's the intent? Is that stated anywhere in the municipal code?
I, I don't know the municipal code language, but the intent is clearly to allow for public facilities to be constructed in the City of Cupertino.
And then, so right now, we don't have a definition of public use, public, public serving uses? Or could you describe what that means?
I'd say there'd typically be uses like schools, city buildings, you know, the county head facilities.
It could be shelters.
You know, the sheriff, the sheriff's facilities, I mean, they're.
Could it become housing shelters? And, and even medical facilities? That's serving a certain population?
Generally, those would be zoned differently. I mean, medical facilities are typically called out separately.
But it's public serving, though?
I'm not sure that I would define it that way, and ultimately, this, it would be a decision that, that, you know, the Community Development Director would make recommendations, and the Planning Commission would.
But if there is no definition in the municipal code or the state code, how would the Planning Commission or the Director make that determination? It's pretty arbitrary, then.
They would determine whether it's a public-serving use or not.
Based on nothing?
Their discretion and judgment, yes.
Based on their discretion? And, okay, so I'd like to.
They'd also have to make the, the findings that are required to, to issue a use permit, which, you know, would, would, you'd have to take into account adverse impacts to the community.
Okay, so then, then I'd like to make a substitute motion. Or maybe first a friendly amendment to see if I. Okay, so then I'd like to make a substitute motion or maybe first a friendly amendment to see if I-
Discussions first? So I want to come back to that question Councilmember Chow continued to ask. I want to concentrate on consistent. It has to be a consistent use. So education and RV parking definitely is not consistent. Am I correct to assume that?
That's correct.
Okay, so a consistent use is the judgment of the department recommending to our planning commissioner. I do believe that we need to place that trust that consistent is a very important word in that it has to be consistent. It's not going to be a hospital, it's not going to be a shelter, it's not going to be RV parking. And I do have a question of how do we define public use? That is a very, very broad definition. So I do believe consistency is very important and that's a judgment of your department to recommend to the planning commission. Is that a correct assumption?
That's correct. You have to rely on the integrity and the professionalism of the Director of Community Development to make that judgment call. And that's a pretty standard, industry standard. We have a list of other uses that are in a BA zone and those are all consistent with a school educational type of use. We don't see any RV parking, like the city attorney had mentioned, you know, uses like medical center or shelters, those are categorized as different uses. So yes, they're public per se, but they're always categorized as different uses per planning zoning code in general.
So even with that, that does have to go to planning commission and that's an open meeting and we can, people, residents can still go and do that public input and- And so there is a process, that's what I'm trying to- okay, that's what I'm getting, okay. So I am good with that. So Councilmember Chow, if you want to make a substitute motion, please do.
Thank you for clarifying that. At least we have in the meeting record that those uses are not considered public serving uses consistent with BA zone. And I hope to make first a friendly amendment, see if my councilmembers would agree to ensure that we are not confused. So just remove the second part, that remove privately operated public serving uses so that we keep the privately operated educational uses. Would my councilmember accept the friendly amendment?
I will decline the friendly amendment. I trust the judgment of the Director of CDD.
Okay, then I am making that a substitute motion. So we, the council has a chance to consider the staff recommendation with the amendment of ensuring that we have privately operated educational uses, but remove the public serving uses since it's not clear what that even means. Thank you.
We have a motion and do we have a second?
I would like to hear if there's a definition at all of privately operated public serving. To me, that just means that the public would be able to access what they're providing. What does that generally mean?
I don't believe it's defined, but it is, but I mean, the language, I think, makes it clear that the uses should be consistent with what's allowed in the BA district, you know, if operated by a public agency. And I think we all have some sense of the kind of services that public agencies provide.
Correct, and through the mayor, you mentioned an appeal process, someone mentioned this appeal process. If something were to get through the planning commission and we have, someone has a problem with it, how does that appeal process to the city council work? And if it were this, the RV parking, for instance, let's say that did get through, how would someone appeal it? And then what are our rights as the council to say, no, that's unacceptable?
Yeah, so anybody would have the right to appeal, you know, they'd have to pay the fee for the appeal or request a waiver of the fee. And so that would be agendized for council and it would be a de novo hearing before council. So council could revisit the planning commission's decision without deference to the planning commission and make its own judgment as to whether this use is appropriate for the property.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a substitute motion. Do we have a second? If not, the substitute motion does not-
I'll provide a second for discussion. If there's any comments on that.
Okay, so we have a-
So then I have question on this substitute motion. So in case the planning commission approve a certain use that they think is public serving uses, but since the term is not determined and someone appeals and it comes to the council, what legal basis the council might even have to overturn such approval since the term is not defined?
As I explained in response to Councilmember Moore's question, council would hear the appeal de novo, so meaning that it would not be bound by, in any way, by the determination of the planning commission and could make its own judgment.
But at that time, would then the city attorney might advise the council that we can overturn because the public serving uses is not even defined and we can't, we have, we will be under illegal trouble if we deny the permit because we didn't define it. So would that put the city at legal risk by not defining this term?
I mean, so that's a hypothetical question, but I mean, again, this is a discretionary process where council can generally deny a permit just because they determine the use is inappropriate for the property in the sense that it would have adverse impacts.
I think we had a similar case earlier this year with the sign ordinance, right? And then it was not clear what's freeway facing. And then we have different interpretation on what that means. And then because of that, I, based on the state law, I think that sign is freeway facing. But then based on our municipal code, it wasn't clear. And then the staff determined that that sign was not freeway facing. So because of this unclear, unclear definition, we were not able to- We were really tied, our hands were tied because of that. So isn't, wouldn't it be safer to the city if we clearly define this term that's in the code, in our law, but it's not defined?
You're welcome to try to define the term. I mean, I think it's-
I don't know how to define it, so I'm seeking the help with it of the city attorney. Is that term defined anywhere?
It's not defined in the code. As I said, as I explained earlier, I think, given the context and also some of the language in the amendment, the public serving uses would be the types of uses that a public agency would normally, types of uses in public services that a public agency would normally provide.
That include RV parking?
That's unusual.
But that's a service a public agency could provide?
Again, this would still be a discretionary process.
So I'd like to bring it back to council. Anybody has questions before you? Do we have other councilmembers, any questions? Also, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, go ahead.
Okay, great. So I want to read this little paragraph and maybe it would be helpful. I do believe what we're saying here, what we're, our words are creating our legislative intent here. So this, what we're saying matters. Privately operated educational uses and privately operated public serving uses included, including but not limited to daycare and private educational facilities, which in the opinion of the Director of Community Development are similar to the permitted uses in the BA zoning district and which do not create significant adverse impacts to the surrounding area. So if the planning commission doesn't put something that we think is similar, our legislative intent is that it would be similar and we simply, when it comes to council, we deny it. I believe I'm understanding that correctly and we do have a kind of a legal leg to stand on.
Okay, Councilmember Froom?
So I think I largely agree with what Councilmember Moore just described. I also think that by not specifically defining it, it allows us to retain more discretion and I would prefer that we be in that position.
Okay, if there are no more discussions, we have a motion that's made by Councilmember Froom, second by Vice Mayor Mohan.
Mayor with the yes.
The substitute motion did not go through. Nobody said, oh, you did. I am so sorry. We have a substitute motion first and if there's no more discussions, let's vote on the substitute motion with Councilmember Chow and second by Councilmember Moore with the description of education only, if I get it correctly. Okay, let's vote on the substitute motion first.
The substitute motion fails with Chow voting yes.
We're going to the first motion that made by Councilmember Froom and second by Vice Mayor Mohan. Let's vote by light.
The main motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going back to number nine that on the consent calendar that's pulled, which is cancellation of the December nineteen twenty twenty-three city council meeting. I believe it was pulled by Councilmember Chow, so I would like you to speak first. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't ask. It's your staff report.
No, mayor, the information is in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chow?
So I think we are adding a special meeting next Thursday for the mayor election. I wonder why that can be just be on the December nineteenth so that we are not moving meetings around. And then also I think the staff requested a meeting on the twentieth or the twenty-first during the day. And, but is that, is that moved to January now? I think I received, the staff wants to have a meeting during the day, I think on Friday, for policy review. Why couldn't that be done on the nineteenth? Why do we need to have special meeting after special meeting?
If I may, I can answer that question, mayor?
Yes, please.
So the special meeting for the election of mayor and vice mayor was established by the council procedures to occur on the second Thursday of the month of December. The policy and procedure special meeting was actually canceled, so that is no longer happening on the twentieth.
Oh, okay.
And then what was your other question?
Okay, yeah, then that's, yeah, I was wondering how, why we can have that. And I think we have a specially packed agenda today. And I wish that it should have been less packed today where I have to leave work early and then we could have an easy agenda on the nineteenth, then it's easier. It feels like we are packing it. And so how about the discussion on the revised VAALCO proposal? That's on the reported information item today. So if we, would that come to council meeting at another time, but not on the nineteenth?
So there was no plan to bring a further item on VAALCO at this particular moment?
And the staff, I think the information item report mentioned that the staff will make a presentation to the council.
When it's appropriate, we'll bring the VAALCO item, but at this point-
About what time we might have that?
We don't have an identified time at this point.
But it will be a discussion item or just information?
We just received the plans for VAALCO this week, so we haven't had a chance to evaluate them and to understand what has been submitted.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Can I, may I entertain a motion? Okay.
Would you like to ask if there's any public comment?
Public comment. I think, I thought the public was going with, okay, I'm gonna open for public comment. Do we have a card?
No, mayor, I have no cards and no hands raised on the table.
All right, so I will close the public comment and coming back to the council for a motion so that I will make a motion for as staff recommendation. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Guess we made motion in a second. Can we vote by light?
The motion carries unanimously.
At this moment, I'd like to come to council reports and comments. I know we have four councilmembers have reports. And Councilmember Chow, do you want to make a oral report? You wanna? Okay, thank you. And at this moment, I really want to say, is city manager's report. I would like to say our city manager Pamela Wu is on Zoom all the time. I'm seeing her. She is sick at home and actually I did ask, she did ask, could she come? And we said, I think you better just stay home and zooming in because we really don't want to, you know, get close to you right now. But thank you for being a great city manager, but I know you have a city manager report in the video. So thank you for staying with us all the time and let's roll your video. Or Pamela, I'm gonna let you say something. Oh, we can't hear you.
No?
Here we go.
Okay, thank you, mayor. As you can tell, my voice isn't the normal and thank you for your accommodation. Looking forward to be working with you closely in twenty twenty-four and please enjoy the video.
On behalf of the city, I would like to welcome you all and thank you for your commitment to supporting our annual tree lighting.
This festival season is a time for our community to come together to celebrate the spirits of unity, kindness, and generosity.
Maybe your magic can help us light this really big tree.
Okay, let's see what we can do. Five, four, three, two, one.
We did it! Thank you so much, Santa!
Thank you for the happy holiday video. Here, I want to thank Assistant City Manager Matt Morley for stepping in in the last minute and doing a wonderful job, so thank you so much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and we do miss Pamela, so we'll have her back at the next meeting.
Okay, so right now I am going to go to council and staff comments, future agenda items. I do think we have a little time for that. So any comments from council, last minute comments from council and comments from staff? If not, any future agenda items?
So I think we have gotten requests many times for the recording for parks and rec meeting. If we are not doing video recording, maybe we should at least retain the audio recording and post it.
You are proposing a future agenda item?
If that needs to be an agenda item, yeah. So I think we should record our, maybe parks and rec and maybe other commission meetings. So since we are video recording it anyway for two take minutes, so why not post it?
We do have a TBD item on this already, so it should be coming back to the council at some point in the future.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Councilmember, if not, I am going to call the meeting adjourned at ten twenty. Councilmember, if not, I am going to call the meeting adjourned at 10:20.